Welcome to the Monday, August 20th Council Committee Work Session. We have three items this evening. After each of the three, we will be taking public comment. We do have a change in order this evening due to some staff compatibility issues schedule-wise. We're going to need to move transportation concurrency to the front. But the good news for those of you who are here for the senior center update is that you won't have to wait until after the solid waste services recycling conversation. So it's a bit of, you know, we do what we can. So with that, let's move forward with ID 0297, oh, sorry, ID 0266, transportation concurrency with City Administrator Moon, Director Lynn, and Torsten, our consultant.
Oops, wrong one. I went the right way. There you go.
Good evening. Emily Moon, interim city administrator. I'm going to kick off tonight and then turn it over to Torsten, our consultant. And at the end, Sheldon will be back up to assist with any questions if you have them directed at him as opposed to Torsten. Tonight, just a quick overview on what we're going to cover.
Excuse me, can you speak a little louder?
I will certainly try. All right. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide you with a briefing on the results of the concurrency models technical update. That's a data run of the system. And we're going to review what the scope of work was that was included in this year's work plan and the related budget allocation and how that fits in with the more comprehensive view of our transportation concurrency. So first, we just wanted to give you a quick rundown of what tonight's plan is, what we're going to be covering and what we're not. And this includes the scope of work from this year's project. So this is the required update from our municipal code. Updates the model based on land use and provides data that we use to update our traffic impact fees. This is not the scope of work that involves looking at policy goals or the methodology used in concurrency. We wanted to give you a sense of where we are on the concurrency system and also why we do concurrency. So the State Growth Management Act requires jurisdictions adopt a level of service or an LOS standard for their transportation systems. State law requires that improvements, for example, streets, sidewalks, bike lanes, and the like, are needed to maintain Issaquah's adopted LOS or level of service are installed at the time of development, or that a financial commitment is in place to spend the collected fees on appropriate transportation system improvements. The city uses a computer model to analyze what motorized and non-motorized transportation projects are needed to maintain the adopted LOS and accommodate projected growth. The city then accepts, rejects, prioritizes those transportation projects through adoption of a capital improvement plan. When a development is proposed, its associated trips are compared to what is available in a citywide trip bank. If the development's trips counts were anticipated and are within the citywide trip bank balance, it's deemed to have passed concurrency and it pays an impact fee into the citywide mitigation fund. In 2013, the city did a major overhaul of its concurrency system. It made changes to policy and the system overall. And those changes were implemented in January 2015. We call that system the simplified concurrency system. So if we use that term, that's what we're talking about, was that overhaul in 2015 and the process we use today. That simplified concurrency system includes a list of capital improvement projects necessary for the city to be concurrent. These are projects that are just a subset of our overall transportation improvement plan. Also includes a traffic impact fee that developers would pay for concurrency. It includes a policy stating that the city would be able to use these fees for any and all of the projects on the list, and that no improvement project is tied to any specific development. The system also included reaffirmation that the city would have to provide funding for its share of the improvements' costs and that the city would need to build the projects. The concurrency policy states that a technical update of the model ensuring new development and trips impacts are modeled, and that we should perform that update every three years. We commenced the model update in 2017, but its completion was delayed as staff worked on multiple projects, including the building moratorium and as we were coordinating modeling with other planning efforts. Tonight, we're presenting the results of that update. The model's output is used to update the list and cost of eligible projects, which then become the basis for an update of the traffic impact fees. So a reminder that our transportation component of our capital plan, which we also refer to as a state-required TIP or TIP or Transportation Improvement Plan, includes both concurrency projects and non-concurrency-related projects. The dollar figures on this slide are from the TIP adopted in 2013 and from the prior concurrency update. The TIP has been updated since that time, and therefore, these numbers will change as we move from the technical update we're discussing tonight to the subsequent update of project costs and impact fees. In 2014, 2015, when these figures were first shown, the city estimated that our concurrency project obligation could be met through a combination of grants, other city funding sources, and developer fees. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Torsten Linao. And Torsten's from CH2M Hill. He's the consultant that has helped us to update our model. Thank you.
Come, Torsten. Thank you. So my name is Torsten. If I use a technical term that you don't understand or if I say something that's confusing, please don't hesitate to interrupt and ask me to explain, okay? I try not to, but every once in a while, I get stuck in it. Okay, so as Emily had pointed out, we did a technical update of the concurrency system. So there was the policy update that we did in 2013 that was eventually implemented in 2015. But this go-around was literally taking the same concurrency system and just updating. And the things that we updated include getting new traffic counts to make sure that we're keeping up with growth, both regionally and within the city. So we went from a 2013 baseline to a 2017 baseline. All of our counts were collected in 2017. And then we looked at land use. So where did we go from land use that was planned in 2013 that is now built? And maybe some land use was planned but is no longer going to happen. Those types of changes and updates, we do that technical update, but we don't do any policy land use changes. So we're not contemplating new growth somewhere that we didn't contemplate before. Okay? And then lastly, network changes. So anything that might have changed in that TIP that Emily had mentioned over the four years, we make sure that we are consistent with the current TIP and that the concurrency system reflects that.
Torsten, regarding the land uses, do we assume build-out at maximum capacity?
We assume it's not maximum capacity, but we do assume a, what we're calling a build-out of the city. It could be higher than that, but it's the amount of land use that we planned for when we did the 2013 update. So it is more than what is vested. So there's, I'm going to go into the three land use categories. We've got existing, land use that exists and is on the ground today. Then there's land use that's been approved by the city. We call that pipeline or vested growth. That's been approved, but it isn't built yet. And then there's the land use that is planned for, but there's no specific developer or application into the city for that land use. It's just land use that we're anticipating may occur, and we are planning to occur by 2040.
Okay, then it's that third category where my question is, and so when we get to that, maybe I'll have more.
Okay, so I'm going to talk first about the land use changes. And there's a lot of numbers and bar charts and everything on this graphic. It's a little busy, but I'm going to try and break it down for you. And the thing I want to concentrate on first, well, first the three bullets, the land use things that we did. We did talk to the city of Samamish, and we got an update of their land use since 2013. We always get their land use because part of their city is within our model window. So we want to make sure that we're reflecting any growth or change in land use that's occurred within the city of Samamish that impacts Issaquah. And so we did obtain that, and we updated that land use within our model window. The other thing that we did is we went through all the concurrency certificates that had been issued since 2013. So that's development now that we are considering vested or pipeline that's in the system, has been approved but isn't built yet. So that land use was updated in the model. And then finally, towards the very end of the model update, the staff and I got together to talk about the fact that the Talis and Highlands Development Agreements are either expired now or about to expire. And so we wanted to account for that change because all of that land use had previously been assumed as pipeline or vested growth. And with the expiration of the development agreements, we moved some of that land use from vested to future growth. And I'll talk about that now as I go through these graphics at the top of the page. So the first thing to note is the color scheme on the two graphs on the top. The blue is existing land use. The orange is vested land use, so land use that's been approved but hasn't been built yet. And then that gray box at the top is the future land use. Note that on both the commercial graphic and the residential graphic, that the top of the two bar charts, each one comparing, by the way, the 2013 to our updated 2017, that the top is roughly the same. And it should be because we weren't reinventing land use. We were just moving land use around from whether it's vested to existing to planned, basically documenting what happened over the last four years. There was, however, as you'll note, a very slight increase on both sides, and that was land use that was approved over the four years that we did not plan for, that was not in the system at the time of 2013, but that we want to definitely account for now. Okay, so again, very small change, but note that overall, the land use did not change. And the only change overall is land use that actually happened. So it wasn't a policy decision to change anything. It was just land use that came in the door. Yes?
What are the units on the left side of the chart?
Okay, so for commercial, it's square feet. And for residential, it's units, number of units.
Oh, I'm sorry. You need to be by the microphone to answer that question. We're getting the...
For commercial, it is square feet. And for residential, it's number of units. Okay?
Stacy?
Thank you. Torsten, I don't understand what the significance of those charts are. Why is that important for us to know?
So what I wanted to point out is now, the significance is, let's start with the commercial land use. Note that the blue bar got taller from 2013 to 2017, something you should expect. Some of the pipeline development that we had planned for in 2013 actually got built and is now impacting the street network. So there are cars on the street related to that development. So the blue increased and the orange got smaller. So basically, all I'm showing here is that we moved land use from the orange box, from the vested, to the existing. And that reflects, then, that is reflected in the 2017 traffic counts that we obtained. So we're trying to match the new counts to the increase in existing land use. Okay?
I have a question about that.
Yep.
But yet, the aggregate of existing plus pipeline has gone down. So you moved some units from pipeline to existing, but you moved some from vested, sorry, you moved some from vested to basically unvested.
Correct. And so that is the Highlands and the Talis expirations. So what happened there was, they were vested before, and we didn't want to just get, now that the development agreement has expired, we didn't want to get rid of the land use because we still assume that land use is going to occur, but it is no longer vested. So we moved that into the planned pile. You bet. So that's the difference between the two. I won't go into the specifics of the numbers, but you can see how things change. So there's a more drastic, I guess, change in that orange box for commercial land use than there is for residential, but it was all basically, it's an accounting exercise, making sure that we've got all the land use in the correct box. And why it's important is because the gray box at the top of all of these is what we can charge an impact fee for. We cannot charge an impact fee for the orange or the blue box. Okay? So that's why it's absolutely important that we get the numbers, the accounting, correct on this exercise. So these match this table below. If you really like numbers, yes, sir.
Just a quick question. The reason we can't charge impact fees on the orange and the blue is because we already have?
Correct. The orange has definitely already paid an impact fee, and part of the blue has paid an impact fee. Okay? Great. Okay, so how the top graphics match to the bottom is only if you really want the very specific numbers. You should be able to match the 2017, the two 2017 bar charts, to the numbers you see in the table below. So for instance, the residential looks on the bar chart like it's around 26,000 at the very top. If you look at this column, so the column labeled 2040 total under residential, you'll see the exact numbers, 26,644. Okay, so that's how you can match the two tables together. The only other thing I want to point out is this box off to the side, on the far right of the table, is the land use that we can charge an impact fee for. So that's the planned land use that hasn't already paid an impact fee.
Torsten, just walk me through, for Issaquah total residential units, you've got, in 2017, you've got 16,756.
Correct.
And you say in the pipeline is 20,406. Ooh, and the 2040 total is the 2040 pipeline plus what's left?
Correct.
Okay, now I got it.
So there's a delta. So between the 16, 7, and the 20,004, that 3,000 sum is new growth.
Because what I was looking at was Issaquah minus CI and Villages, and I'm like, where's that growth going to be? Oh, there's only 93 units, which is what I would imagine.
So the other thing to take away from this table on the far right is note where the growth is occurring. So for much of the growth, it is all in the central Issaquah area. Okay? That's these sets of numbers. Then because of the expirations of the Highlands and Talis, we did now accommodate some future growth there. So that's growth that is now planned for but was used to be vested. And then finally, we have a nominal amount of growth outside those two big urban areas. In the rest of the city, about 100 units of housing. Is the public allowed to ask?
No, I'm sorry. We don't actually take public questions during this part, but you're welcome to, I'm going to take public comment when we're done with this item. And if you have comment that you want to make at that point, you'll be welcome to do so.
Okay. Any questions about the glazed-over numbers? All right. Okay, so that was the land use. The other major thing that we changed, besides traffic, the updated traffic counts and the land use, was looking at where did we make changes in the network. So if you remember, back to Emily's introductory presentation, there are projects in the TIP that are considered concurrency projects, and there are projects that are non-concurrency projects. So you'll note down the side of this graphic, the list of projects are not numerical, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. There are missing projects. The missing ones from the TIP are ones that are considered non-concurrency, so I didn't reproduce them here. So I don't want you to think that we missed something or forgot something. They're just projects that are not considered concurrency projects. In order for it to be a concurrency project, it has to add a vehicle capacity. So non-motorized projects unfortunately are not part of an impact fee. And that's a state statute. It has nothing to do with an Issaquah policy. It's, you know, state law. Okay? All right, so the numbers, again, down the left side of the table reflect the current TIP project numbers. And in the map that's shown on the graphic, if the number is in a red box, it matches the current TIP. Any numbers that are in a blue box are projects that were in the 2013 TIP and that are no longer in the current TIP. And so those were changes that we needed to discuss, reconcile, talk through, and figure out what to do with for this update. Okay? So I just reproduced the list for you. If you want to go, you can go through each project if you want. I'm not going to go through the detail of that. But basically, all the ones listed on this graphic, I've got five slides coming up, all the ones on this particular slide, there were no changes. On the, then sequentially continuing in the TIP, this list, there were three. And I'm going to go, and they are the three blue boxes that are on the graphic. So we'll start with project 2020, which is at the top, and it is located at the intersection of Eastlake-Samamish Parkway and 56. There was a project in the 2013 TIP that included a pedestrian bridge overcrossing that allowed us to remove the pedestrian crosswalks at the intersection so that pedestrians could cross at a second level. And the addition of those overcrossings of pedestrians allowed us to remove the minimum green time at the intersections that allowed a pedestrian to cross the road, which allowed us to call it a capacity project, even though it was really a non-motorized project. But because it allowed us to re-time the intersections, removing the pedestrians from that calculation, it was considered a capacity project at the time. In this year's update, the project isn't in the TIP, and it's not for us, I guess, necessarily tonight to argue whether it should or shouldn't be in the TIP because it has nothing to do with concurrency, but certainly you can decide whether you want to put it back in the TIP. But what I do want to tell you tonight is, there is no longer a need at that intersection to have a grade-separated pedestrian crossing for capacity reasons. Now, there may be for safety reasons, or for connectivity reasons, or for many other policy reasons that you might want to have that grade crossing, but from a capacity standpoint, it's not needed, and therefore, I can't unfortunately allow it to be an impact fee project. So that one is not for policy reasons, but for technical reasons being removed from the list.
I'll just remember Hunt.
Yes?
What was the change that made it not a capacity-related project?
So it has to do with a lot of things. So the changes in land use that occurred, and then also the traffic counts that we obtained at that intersection between 2013 and 2017 might have changed such that then the additional growth that we added on top didn't force us to have to remove the pedestrian timings from that intersection. So it could be a number of reasons, but for those multitude of reasons, and it was borderline before in 2013, the need to do that pedestrian crossing. So at least at this round, it looks like it's no longer needed. All right, any other questions about number 20? Again, I don't want to say that project isn't needed. It's just not a capacity project anymore.
Just to, let's keep going. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, so I'll go to number 24 next, is an intersection, it was some turn lane improvements that are needed at that intersection. And this one, I'm a little wishy-washy on. I think it was that that project has been included in a separate TIP project.
Except the Maple, the 4 intersection?
It's the Maple 12.
Maple 12?
Yeah. Okay. So that one is, right now, we're showing it as not included because it is no longer in the city's TIP list. And so, and it was also not needed for capacity reasons anymore, so we did not include it. Again, it's not, I want to go back to Emily's, if you remember her graphic, in fact, let's just go to it. We are at this point in the process, right? And so this is basically informing council of the results of the modeling, and then this is your opportunity to tell us, no, you got it wrong. Do something different before we move into the next steps. So this is an example of we are, from our analysis, we're showing that that project is no longer needed from a capacity standpoint, but it may be needed for other reasons, and it may be a policy reason why you want to keep it. So this would be your opportunity to tell me, Torsten, you got it wrong. Put it back in.
I'll just remember Ramos.
Yeah, just to see, so I'm assuming those two intersections are further down on your chart.
Oh, the level of service?
Level of service. So, because you're saying, that's what would take them out, say, you're saying that on its own, from then till now, the level of service has improved from a E to a D or whatever, right?
Or it stays below, it's either level of service D or below.
Right. But it was, if it was in the previous one, it had to be higher than that.
The improvement was needed in order to maintain a level of service D. Right.
And so you're saying that level of service has improved over the last four years?
It has, probably because traffic counts reflected a decrease in traffic at that particular intersection between 2013 and 2017, and therefore, that improvement is probably no longer needed.
I hate news, but could you go to the chart and look at those two intersections?
All right, we're here. So that is intersection 70. It goes, correct. Okay, so intersection 70 is on this page, almost at the bottom. So it's level service B today, and in 2040, we're projecting it will operate at level service C. And what Emily just wanted me to point out or remind folks is that it could also be a reflection of, with the change in land use and the change in transportation projects, that traffic has rerouted a different way, and no longer wants to use this intersection, has maybe chosen a different route to travel rather than this one. And that could also be a reflection of why that improvement is no longer needed.
But you're saying that's a B today, projected to go to a C?
Correct.
Okay, and the other intersection? I want to look at both of those. That was often Maple, and then there was also the Samamish, it's like Samamish, where the pedestrian one was.
Was it number 20?
Yes, number 20.
So number eight.
Right.
So D today and D in the future. It's number eight on this graphic up here or on the table? Now, I want to, I want to, I know this is a really congested intersection, and the natural instinct is for everybody to go, there is no way by 2040, that intersection is still going to be operating at level service D. I want all of you guys to remember, there are $285 million worth of projects built into this set of columns, okay, that allow that, even though we're not doing an improvement at that intersection, we're doing improvements elsewhere in the city that allow that intersection to remain a to remain at level service D. So people are using other ways to get from point A to point B in the city, just not through that intersection anymore. Okay?
Okay, but that's a D and remains a D?
Correct.
Versus the other.
It does get worse, but it's.
Within D.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thanks. So you said this was our opportunity to tell you maybe that you got it wrong?
Yes.
So how is, how is it that we are supposed to figure out from this information, how you might have gotten it wrong?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, I can tell you from a technical standpoint, and this is going to sound really pompous, that I got it right. What I'm telling you is, from a policy standpoint, tell me that I got it wrong. So in other words, maybe at that intersection, the one that's got a blue box 24, where I had previously included some right turn pocket improvements, even though I'm saying from a technical standpoint, you don't need it, but maybe from a safety, or a political reason, or a, you know, policy reason, or whatever, you want me to include it, then by all means, this is your opportunity to tell me, no, Torsten, I want you to include that.
And I think it might have been helpful for us to have some of that detail before the meeting, so we could have at least prepared to try to answer the questions about.
And maybe tonight isn't, and maybe I said that wrong too, maybe you don't have to tell me tonight, but this is, this is me communicating to you where we are, and if at the end of tonight, you say, we need time to think about this, that's fine. I could have given this to you beforehand, but you would not have probably gotten the same out of it without me telling you about it, right?
Sure, it could have come with a memo too, that some explanation about how we could have prepared, even though it's technical information and a lot of numbers, a little bit more about what you might be looking for from us.
Gotcha.
Would have been helpful to have pre-meeting, because it's, I mean, I think it's probably, certainly impossible for me to say, oh, I think you got number 20 wrong, because I, from my memory, know, remember everything about that intersection that might help me inform myself about whether you might have gotten something wrong, so.
Including it does not change really any of the calculations, but what it does do is, moving forward, it puts it in that impact fee basket of projects that we include. So that's really, that's really what's important.
So I will then have a question for interim city administrator Moon, which is, if this council wanted to have a little time to think about this, what that looks like in terms of when you would want to get feedback from council?
Sure, excellent question. And we haven't discussed sort of timeline for next steps. Some of the next steps include updating the projects and the project costs, and certainly want that input before we do that, but I don't have a timeline for exactly when we're going to begin that work. Tonight is just meant to be briefing on what the model run had to say, those subsequent conversations about how projects are changing, or what the prioritization is of those projects. We do need a schedule. I don't have an answer for you right now, but we can certainly provide that after the meeting, what our intended timeline would be.
Okay. And I think understanding then, council, the mechanism for council to provide that feedback, and when we, as a group, will be discussing that feedback integrated in. Yes. Deputy Council President Batiste?
Thank you. This might be a question for you, Emily, I'm not, I'm not sure. But in regard to the three that we have highlighted, or the two that we're looking to take out, would we receive more information, more detailed information about this is being proposed to be taken out, because this improvement, this improvement, and this improvement are going to impact that intersection? Like, detail that would be really specific to those two, to help us make a better decision?
Sure, we could provide that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. Torsten, it sounds that like, through your analysis, you made certain results approached or passed certain thresholds, and in-out decisions were made algorithmically. And yet, you're saying that we maybe can tell you you're wrong.
So again, I want to say, what I did was, from a technical standpoint, the ones that I'm talking about, I'm either going to tell you they're needed, or they're not needed from a capacity standpoint.
Okay.
And that is what I was charged to do, a technical capacity change.
Okay.
The things that I'm telling you guys is, you always have the power to say, well, okay, I get the technical reason, but there might be other reasons why, Torsten, I don't want you to take that out.
Okay. So what you're saying is, based upon your calculations and their impact to capacity, state statute doesn't limit us, our decisions on what's in or out, just upon that.
That's correct.
We can choose to be in and out for other reasons.
Absolutely. Yes. It's just whether or not it's going to be in the impact fee calculation or not.
Councilmember Ramos?
Yeah, and just a clarification, maybe for the public as well, the difference to me, if it's in the calculation or not, is that if it's in concurrency, then that becomes a funding source for us to pay for that improvement.
Correct.
If it's out, then we have to find our own funds somewhere else to pay for that improvement, and that's a critical difference. And I say we can't do it, we can't do anything, but it's a funding source that makes the difference, whether it's part of the concurrency, then those impact fees can go for those projects. If they're not in the project list, then those impact fees can't go for other projects.
Yes, with one distinction. So again, back to number 20, that one, whether you keep it in the TIP or not, there is nothing I can do to include it in the impact fee calculation, because there is no capacity benefit associated with it. 24 is different, in that even though I don't need it to maintain a level service D, a level service, adding the turn pockets will certainly improve the capacity at the intersection, and so I can call it a capacity project, and we could still collect an impact fee towards it, but it is not needed in order to maintain a level service D.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I'm going to go back to my previous question, and we were discussing whether or not a project was in or out. Bill's question helped clarify it a little bit further. It's in or out, whether or not it's on the TIP. But it's still your algorithm that says whether or not it qualifies for impact fees.
Correct.
Other questions right now? All right.
We have one more, I'm sorry, one more project on this map to go through, well, two more, but number 31 is another one that was on the previous 2013 tip. It is not in the current 2017 tip, and I don't understand what happened or why it's not there. But I'm going to go to the next graphic and show you that, from a modeling standpoint, this is that, the project that I've circled in blue, or the road that I've circled in blue, is that project. It's a brand-new road. It was needed to allow the CIP amount of land use to occur. And so from this graphic, also, I wanted to point out, the amount of traffic it carries is, you know, between, like, 1,300 cars during, in a one-hour period on any one link, so it is a significant project. It is needed to maintain level service in the city, and so I, again, I'm pointing out, I've included it in the modeling. If you agree, and that is a technical recommendation that I'm giving you, all I'm saying is, it needs to be added back to the 27 TIP. It's probably just an oversight, it got left out by accident, whatever, we just need to make sure that it gets back into the TIP. Okay?
So how, so it's needed, it was required, it sounds like for the central ISACW plan, and it would carry a ton of capacity.
Correct.
So how do we, how do we tell you that that sounds like it's probably a good idea to keep in?
How do you tell me? I think through your next month or two that you debate these three things that I'm telling you about, you just confirm, yes, Torsten, you got that right, it's needed technically, we understand that, get it back into the TIP.
Councilmember Ray?
So if we don't put it back in the TIP, what does it do to all of your downstream calculations?
So that one, if I, if that one gets removed, I would need to rerun the model without that link, and rerun all the intersection level service, it's a significant effort. And so I'm telling you, from a technical standpoint, it is needed.
I think it was first Councilmember Ramos, then Councilmember Hunt, and then Councilmember Batiste.
So this one I get concerned about, because that's, it's construction of a whole new street that doesn't exist, cannot exist unless there's major redevelopment.
Correct.
Other private property owners decide to do something, so it's something we have, like, very little, if any, control over. And to put it in there saying that has to be done, and if it's not, it blows the whole model out of the water, basically. I get real nervous in that situation, because there's no way we could just decide that we're going to do that project by ourselves.
So, I know, I'm sorry to interrupt. You, I don't think, and you, staff, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, if I misspeak, I don't think you guys, as a council, would say, hey, guys, go out and build that project for me right now, even though the land use isn't here yet, because Torsten told me we're going to need it sometime. That project realistically would only occur once you start getting development agreements in that are adjacent to it, and then that, at that point, the developer would be dedicating land, would be, and then the land dedication would become a credit towards the impact fee and all that. So it's, it's a hand-in-hand thing, you would, you would build the road once the land use is there and is needed, and allows that road to get built. Does that make sense?
Yeah, except things all around that could be built and not have that road get built.
Yeah, there might be, one side of the road might redevelop, the other side not, yeah, there's always those complications.
So a lot of things, without that road, it really is a critical piece when you're totally adding a new road to something or not.
Correct. Realize though, also, you do have 10 years, you know, let's say one side of the road, a developer came in and decided to do something there. The road wouldn't need to be built for, you know, statutorily, for at least 10 years. So you have time to then hopefully get the other side to come in and develop, and then you get the road built together. And so that's, you know, how it theoretically works.
They're right.
Theoretically.
Councilmember Hunt, did you still have a question?
So there are two 31s and two 24s on the list here.
Yes.
So the two 31s, is that because it was previously 31, and then it came off the TIP, and it's been replaced by a new 31?
By a new 31, correct.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Deputy Council President Batiste?
I guess that was actually my question with the two 31s, and I just wanted to make sure that we've, we have those broken apart, that's the Providence Point intersection, and then we could be talking about something in the future that's a roadway.
And so the blue 31 would be, let's say it goes back into the TIP, it would become a new number.
Councilmember Winterstein?
My ask of staff would be about this 11th, we've done some things with land use, and for example, required mixed use, and I, I'm not sure where that, where this, Torsten's map, even I couldn't figure out exactly where that street was on the numbers, I know it's east of 12th. And have we done things recently, specifically some of the work items as a result of the moratorium and requiring some land use, like vertical mixed use? Have we done anything recently that, and did we consider this project? This 31 with the green check on it? That's not, you don't have to answer me tonight, but I'd like to know, it seems like it was in, and then we lost track of it, and did we do anything after losing track of it that we may have done differently if we had been tracking it? Hopefully that makes sense. I'll rephrase later. But I'd like to get a, that might be a simple yes or no. Actually, it might be a simple no, but if it's yes, then I would like more information. Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman?
I'm not sure my question is similar to Paul's, but I'll probably ask it a different way. So Torsten, you made a comment about this project allowed us to do the land use, that allowed us to do something with our land use.
So there was the big central ISACW plan effort? Okay, so that, there's a large amount of land use associated with that plan, that's future land use, and this is in that area, and so there is land use surrounding that particular project that was assumed to occur by 2040?
Sure, that was my question. So I wanted a little bit more detail about what it is that this allows us to do that makes it necessary. And again, I don't have to have that detail tonight, and the reason it might be similar to Paul's is because I'm not sure if it was from the original central ISACW plan, or some of the changes that we just made.
Okay. All right, one.
Well, I just want to ask interim city administrator Moon, do you have clarity on what council members Winterstein and Goodman have asked for?
Yes, I do.
Great, thank you.
All right, one last project. The other 24 that's on the list is a current TIP project, and the TIP currently does not state the red word, which is "and vehicle" or vehicular. However, in doing the update with staff this past year, we understand that there is a school district potential project located on Holly that would potentially request or require the connection on Holly, so that there is a vehicular connection over the planned bridge project, rather than just a pedestrian, non-motorized connection on that bridge. We, so we put, we, in the model, we turn that link on to allow vehicles to use that link, and only so that you would have information tonight about whether that's an important project or not. So I am going to provide you that information right here. This blue circled link in the model is with the assumption that there is a vehicular connection on Holly all the way through. So you can see that the volumes are very low. So the only, I would say, from a capacity standpoint, it's not necessarily needed, and I wouldn't say that we need to include it in this update, but from a development perspective, or, you know, I don't know, a negotiation with the district, school district, I don't know what the, you know, what the mechanisms are there that would allow that to become a vehicular connection. I'm just telling you, it's really not needed, it really doesn't impact my work moving forward, but I wanted you to know that this is what the model is predicting that connection to reflect in terms of vehicular traffic.
Councilmember Ray?
So I just want to be clear, on the numbers that we have on this, these charts, they are trips per?
In the PM peak hour, so it's over a one-hour period.
Per hour?
The highest hour in the day.
PM peak?
PM peak.
Okay. So we don't have any AM peak data or anything like that?
That has been an ongoing conversation in the city for a very, very long time indeed, as to what to do about known areas that are likely AM peak, but.
Yes, for the 23 years.
Every year or two, we ask this question, so please give your answer.
For the 23 years I've been working on concurrency, the AM issue has come up over and over and over again. And what we have done in the past, and what we continue to do, is, when there are specific developments that come up that need a significant traffic analysis, we always do an AM peak analysis, and we derive it from our PM peak model. So we reverse the trip tables, which is, I know, a technical term, but we're basically taking trips that would go in one direction in the PM, and making them go in the other direction in the AM. And then there is, the AM is slightly lower than the PM historically overall in terms of traffic volumes, and so we do a little reduction associated with that. We've always done a test, and have shown that the transportation improvements that are needed citywide always accommodate the AM peak hour.
Yeah. Councilmember Goodman?
Well, I want to add, there is one weird little asterisk, right, which has to do with schools, right? Because AM.
Correct, because it's not during the peak.
Right. And so.
The typical peak.
So you don't, in a model like that, if you just took the PM and reversed it, you would miss what's going on around the schools, because the AM peak occurs right when people are dropping their kids off.
Correct. However, there's 5 million square feet, and I don't know how, I forget, 26,000 housing units in the model. The number of trips associated with schools compared to that 5 million and 26,000 is probably 5, 4%, 5% of the total, so it's, I don't want to say it's insignificant, but it's not a huge number.
Unless you're at Newport in Isqwa-Hoopart Road.
Unless you experience that particular intersection.
Right. Councilmember Goodman?
That was my exact comment, and also, I think doing the counts in the mornings is significant for this stretch here. I mean, it's a short stretch. Anyway.
And then projects 36, 37, 38, this slide just has the last three projects in the TIP that are concurrency, considered concurrency projects, but there were no changes. that are concurrency, considered concurrency projects, but there were no changes, so nothing really to say about this one. Okay, so, with all those changes, wanted to give you sort of a, both a historical look at traffic growth in the city, and then, of course, the change in future growth from the 2013 update to the 2017 update. So, the, on the bar chart, the first four are obviously all existing volumes that occurred in that year. So, I went as far back as I had traffic volumes, starting in 2004, 2007, 2013 was the last concurrency update, and then, of course, this update in 2017. You'll note that there is a growth in existing traffic that's occurred over the years. The orange bar reflects what we call regional traffic, and I'm going to define that for you. It is a trip that originates and ends outside the city, but goes through the city. So, it is not a trip that has one end outside the city and one end in the city. So, if you work in Seattle but live in Issaquah, that is not a regional trip. It is only a trip that passes through the city, never stops, and has no end within the city limits. That's that orange bar. The majority of that orange bar is I-90. Okay?
Can I ask? I'm surprised to see that, at the fidelity that we're looking at this right now, that regional pass-through does not, has not increased since 2007, and does not look like it will increase through 2040.
Right.
That seems to fly in the face of the perception of regional pass-through traffic.
Absolutely. It is absolutely opposite of what you would perceive, or what would you, what you would think would be occurring. Realize that, over the years, Issaquah has continued to grow and has provided land use here that has become a destination. And in 2030 and in 2040, for those years, you have continued to create land uses that are destinations for people in Semamish, or Bellevue, or, you know, outside I-90. So, there, as long as one trip is destined to or originated from Issaquah, it is not in that orange bar.
Yeah, but if I think Sneakwamy to Seattle, Sneakwamy to Bellevue, North Bend to Seattle, or on our regional streets, Black Diamond to Bellevue, Covington to Bellevue, Maple Valley to Bellevue, those, aren't those increasing over time?
But you're always assuming that it's somebody living, and I'm putting words in your mouth, but let me check if I'm right, that someone is living outside of those Bellevue, Seattle areas, and working in the Bellevue, Seattle area, realize that you are creating jobs in Issaquah, and that is the whole point.
That's why the blue's going up, right?
Correct.
But it's surprising to me that the amber is not increasing as well.
Right, but you're replacing, people are no longer wanting to drive that 15-mile stretch. They might live out, you know, past Issaquah and I-90, but now they're not willing to go into Bellevue or Seattle, they want to work in Issaquah. So, their trip is staying roughly the same. Over time, that changes. Yes?
Councilmember Goodman?
So, that assumes that all of the commercial build-out that we have in our growth plans? Because what we're finding is that that's not occurring as fast as the residential. So, there's some, so, there's, it could be also reasonable that we don't get all of that.
That's correct.
So, this is assuming that all the plans pan out for what we've provided for.
Yes, and I'm really, I'm really glad you brought that up. That is the reason why we do these technical updates every three years, to make sure that we are in line with growth as it's occurring, as opposed to growth that we hoped would happen.
Because if you go back to one of the first slides, doesn't it show how much we have left in residential?
Correct.
How much we have left in commercial? And we have a vast amount in commercial.
That's right.
But this is assuming that all that gets built, and the people that are now passing through decide, I don't want to work out, I don't want to go all the way, I stop here.
Right.
Yeah.
And we did find, in this four-year period, that some of the commercial became residential. Some of the growth that we were hoping would be commercial became residential, and that's reflected, and that's the reason why we do these updates. We never want to get so far out that our assumptions are completely out of sync with what's really been occurring. And so, that's why the code requires this update every three or four years to make sure we're keeping in line with what's actually happening, even though we might have planned for something different. Does that make sense?
Councilmember Hunt.
So, I was also struck by the fact that the orange is, the regional pass-through is roughly the same, although there's nothing in 2004, and then, since 2007, it's all increasing. So, or, it's all, it's all the same. And I wondered what, what, if any, information about the neighboring cities' land use plans is included in this, because we do know that some of our neighboring cities have their own plans for growth.
Yeah.
So, what information goes into these projections?
So, the Issaquah model includes a portion of Semamish in it. So, that one I mentioned to you, we did reach out to Semamish and get their land use, make sure it was updated in our model. The rest of the region, so King County, Bellevue, Seattle, and anything else that would impact or have influences on traffic coming in and out of the city, we got those traffic forecasts from PSRC. And then, we made sure that the growth that is planned by PSRC for all of those agencies, those other cities, the traffic that's coming in or out of the city at the boundaries of our model match the PSRC model. So, we are making sure that we've got that regional growth accounted for as it enters our model window, or exits our model window. Does that?
So, if there are a large number of residential units' plans on one side of Issaquah, and then, jobs' plans on another side of Issaquah, does it account for the likelihood that those people are going to be regional traffic, or does it account?
A portion of those will go outside the model window, because we have defined from the PSRC model that there is land use outside of our window, and that is, and so, there's an attraction for a job to be, to be linked to a home potentially outside of the city. But some of them are going to be linked to homes inside the city as well. So, it is, it's both.
Other questions? I'm still struggling a little bit. I was just talking to somebody in Black Diamond, and they were talking to me about the massive growth that they're undergoing right now.
Yeah.
And I'm just struggling with the idea that that growth will be matched by the commercial development in our city, such that the pass-through of that massive growth in Black Diamond doesn't increase the regional pass-through.
Wouldn't increase the orange.
Just to pick on Black Diamond.
No, and I'm glad, I'm actually glad you picked on Black Diamond, because when we did the 2013 update, we knew that there was that massive growth planned for Black Diamond. And in fact, when we went to the PSRC model to, again, like I said, get that model window numbers coming into the city from outside, we noted that the PSRC model did not have the amount of growth in Black Diamond that was, that had been expected, or that we were hearing about. So, we actually took the PSRC model, added the land use in Black Diamond that we knew was coming after talking to the city, and then, that's what we used for our, you know, model window. Now, since then, that's been updated. So, it was really just a lag in data getting from Black Diamond to PSRC to make sure that it was, you know, in the model at that time.
But back to my earlier question, right? There's still tons of growth going on in Black Diamond.
There is.
And it's your professional assessment that our build of jobs is going to keep pace with the growth of housing in that area?
Well, it's not just Issaquah, but yes, you have 5 million square feet of commercial growth that's planned, that hasn't been, that is invested yet, but is planned. And then, there's still about a million, almost 2 million square feet invested commercial. So, between the 2 million that's already vested and is coming, and then, the 5 million that's planned, that's 7 million square feet of commercial space that you're planning for. So, that is a lot of, a lot of commercial space that is job, jobs.
All right.
Okay.
Any other questions before we move on? Nope. Councilmember Goodman?
I just, I just have to say that I'm concerned about the number of assumptions that are, that have to.
You're concerned about the what?
I'm concerned about the number of assumptions that have to be made to have that, numbers like that, the orange pass-through look like that, because I, I think it would be very difficult to find it, anybody in the city besides six people who would say, yeah, that totally makes sense, because that's not what, that's not what the experience is, and I just don't believe that we're going to build enough commercial space to take care of the pass-through traffic. And even if we do, they're still, they're still going to come into the city. So, I think it's, I think it's a, still a bigger problem than the chart shows.
And I'm not going to disagree with what you're saying, because I know, you know, there's always a perception that's different than perhaps reality. Another sort of pass-through trip that you should think about is a trip that, a home and a job that are both outside of Issaquah, but they stop at the Costco on the way to home, or they stop to pick up their child at daycare, or they stop to pick up dry cleaning. Any one of those is a, is a trip that is no longer in that orange box, because they stopped in Issaquah.
Okay, well, now, it's starting to make a little more sense.
Yes.
Because they're still on the road, they're just not in the chart.
Correct. But they are using an Issaquah resource on the way.
But it starts to take out too many cars out of the what's actually pass-through traffic. I mean, it's.
Right, but realize that has nothing to do with the impact fee. So, we don't, I mean, I know you guys are focusing on that orange box a lot, but again, it's, you know, it really doesn't impact necessarily the impact fee calculation.
Sure, we just have to, we just have to have some, at least, simple, comprehensive understanding, otherwise, we really won't know what we're doing. And so, I think we do have to dig into a chart like that and understand what's in it, what's not in it, what's, what the assumptions are, because I, I can tell you, I cannot go out on the street tomorrow morning and tell people that.
That one-third of the traffic.
This is the reality.
It's basically.
It's just not true.
I mean, over time, at least existing today, 2017, it's about one-third. I think that's, I think that's really believable. I don't, one-third of the traffic going through Issaquah has both ends outside of Issaquah, that's a huge number.
Yes, but what I'm talking about, when, so, when you further define pass-through as not including pass-through that makes a stop here, then those numbers start to make sense.
Right.
So, I'm just trying to understand the, why, why the blue and orange don't make sense, and so, you know, based on my reality, and I'm hearing what people behind me say, because that's reality, if anybody who drives on the streets, you're going to, you're going to know that we've got a lot of increasing regional pass-through traffic for all of the reasons that were talked about. So, I have concerns about where we're getting our numbers. Is PSRC really the best source? Concerns about what the definition is of regional pass-through traffic, and what's not regional pass-through traffic. So, I'm just trying to understand all of this, because it, when you just look at this and you just talk about it at a high level, it doesn't make sense, that's all.
Councilmember Ramos.
Yeah, I'm going to pick on this a little bit more, because it just, it doesn't follow. So, we've been saying this for a long time, pass-through traffic is causing our problem. And you got 20,000 going into Black Diamond, you had, you've had 10,000 or more going to Maple Valley, Semamish coming there, and those are coming through. And we just did an Issaquah Hobart Road study, and that study just showed that, well, I forget the numbers now, was it 65% of those come, were going through? Don't quote me on it, but it was, you know, probably two-thirds or so were pass-through traffic. Now, if you're going to tell me, as they come through, they pull off at Yummy Yogurt and get a cup of coffee and keep on going, you're going to now not count them as pass-through traffic, that doesn't make any sense to me, because they're passing through, so if they, you know, if they sit at a stoplight for more than, you know, two cycles, then they wouldn't be pass-through traffic either to get a cup of coffee. I mean, it, the point is, they're passing through, if you stop for, you know, a cup of coffee, it doesn't count, that bothers me in that sense.
Yeah.
But those numbers flowing, that, you're saying it's all within the city, and that's, you know, all the growth is within the city, none of it increasing. With all those numbers going around us, and us being the funnel here at I-90, it just, it's really hard for me to get to there when I, when I see what's going on, and we actually have numbers on Issaquah Hobart Road Study, to actually show that, at least that one corridor. So, I just, we got to look at that in some way differently.
Yeah. To some degree, I wish I hadn't shown the orange box, because honestly, honestly, it's semantics, and it really has no impact on what we're trying to accomplish here. I know that you have a very strong feeling about what's regional and what's not. The fact that I cannot call it regional, the way I'm defining it to be not regional, in other words, it has a destination point in the city, allows me to collect an impact fee, and allows you to get money to build projects. So, the fact that I'm defining it the way I'm defining it is better for you. If you want to define it a regional trip, as a trip that originates and ends somewhere outside the city and stops in the city, that's fine, but I'm going to do, I'm going to define it the way I define it in order to allow you to collect the maximum amount of money to build projects in Issaquah. Does that help? I know, I know.
Thank you for that. Deputy Counsel President Batiste?
So, thank you, that, I was just going to follow up on that, but that, I think that that helped answer my question. But I do, I just wanted to echo some of the concerns that Councilmember Goodman spoke about in terms of the commercial and the jobs, and some of those assumptions in regard to taking a look at that, that modeling. I just, that seems.
So, the two, the 20, really, the 2040 column is our current model. The 2030 column was the 2013 model. We expanded 10 years, because the PSRC model has gone out another 10 years. But my point is, the land use component of that bar is not up for debate. It is a policy decision that was made in 2013, it is not up for debate tonight, and we're not changing land use in the city, unless you want to go back and change the CIP EIS and go through that whole planning effort again. I know I'm saying this really sort of sternly, but I want, I just want to make it clear that we're not, the land use is not what we're talking about tonight, other than technical changes in land use, stuff that moved from vested to existing, or stuff that moved from vested to, to planned. And does that?
I appreciate, thank you, I appreciate it. When we're talking about assumptions, I think it's good that we, that we talk about that.
Yeah, and I know it's called assumptions, but it's really, it's your plan, it's the city's plan that was adopted in 2015 through the CIP EIS process. So, it's not an assumption, it is your plan for what you want to do in the city.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. The explanation you gave a moment ago is very helpful, because I was struggling with, like my colleagues, like the butt of that cigarette up there, like, is the pain, is the bane of our existence. However, it's that maximum number and the amount of blue that really matter.
Yes.
Because if, if, if a project comes in, so, obviously, if it's residential, people are beginning and ending here, in the, and now, I may be putting words in your mouth, so I'm looking for confirmation.
Mm-hmm.
But if it's commercial-related, whether it be retail, office, whatever, then, then it's creating trips, and they're in the blue.
Correct.
We can collect from that.
Correct.
And yes, I care that we have an accurate measurement and forecast of what's truly doesn't begin or end, because that's pass-through, per the technical definition. But if we're creating more commercial opportunities, and people are either leaving a job, or coming to a job, or coming to a retail, or some other place, that becomes part of our impact fee structure.
And it's in that blue bar.
We can capture that. They may, they may actually be working in Bellevue and living in Black Diamond, but if they come and buy jewelry at some new store that shows up, we can capture money for that.
That's exactly right.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Goodman? Okay? All right, any other questions before we move on? Back to you, Torsten.
All right. So, the result, this is the last slide. The result of all that analysis comes down to, well, it's not the last slide, but it's the crux. Boils down to, then, that analytical analysis that we do on level of service. And does everybody understand level of service? It's an A through F, sort of like a report card, A is good, F is bad. When you get the city standard is level of service D, we need to maintain level of service D or better, except at six intersections that were identified in the 2013 concurrency update. And so, what we were doing with this update is to make sure that everything still looks like we're on track, that with the same land use that we projected in 2013, are we in the same place? And are the same six intersections failing? Are the other 90-some intersections still operating at level of service D or better? So, that was the point of this update, and. So that was the point of this update, and what we found is that we went from six failing intersections to five failing intersections. And I am going to explain what happened there. So five of those six are the exact same intersections that were failing in 2013, so it's the same, those five didn't change, and so we're still in sync with that. The one intersection that fell off the list is the Talis, and it's just off the graphic here, is the Talis driveway on SR-900. And I know all of you are going to say, "Oh, my gosh, I know that intersection operates poorly." What happened there was two things. We actually had a drop in volumes on SR-900 between 2013 and 2017, and the Talis Development Agreement expiration removed growth from Talis that was no longer, that can no longer occur. So the number of trips that are going to go through that intersection decreased from 2013 to 2017, and that's what made that intersection fall off the list. It is still level of service D, it's not operating great, but it is no longer E or F.
Councilmember Goodman.
Can you tell us technically the difference or the specific improvement, like in seconds or minutes or whatever it is, between an F and a D? There's a reason I'm asking.
Like, what would be required in order to bring it from an E to a D?
And the reason I'm asking is because if it improves it by whatever, a few seconds, it's, on a chart, it will show as an improvement, but nobody will have noticed an improvement, really.
Right. So let's go to the table. So I think, Sheldon, you were saying seconds of delay. So you're going to test my memory here, but, so the very first intersection, SR-900 and the eastbound ramps, you'll see it's at 79 seconds of delay, and that results, that's a level of service E condition. I believe 80 seconds is the threshold that brings it to F. So you'll see just two intersections below, the 93 seconds of delay brings it to an F. So 80 seconds or below of delay, and that's average at the intersection, not any one movement, but average overall at the intersection. 80 seconds of delay is a level of service F. 80 or higher is an F. 80 or lower is a D, A through E, sorry. Does that help? Okay. Now, what level of improvement is needed to bring any one of these? It all depends on that delay number. So the higher that delay number goes, I mean, once you're in F, it could be 180 seconds of delay, but the higher that number goes, the more expensive it gets to fix.
Other questions?
So I have a question for you, which is, these all assume sort of a stochastic process, right? It presupposes a process that you can describe as sort of a normal distribution, right, around some number, so that we, you know, a number of 79, we all sort of have an idea what that means because there's a bunch of stuff around 79, and then there's outliers when it gets better or worse. But it's my experience in the city that we have some weird, completely nonlinear stuff that goes on, where all of a sudden, like, I've been at intersection 13 when it was 1,000 seconds.
Yeah.
Right? Where it took me, it took, I once had a land and shore meeting, and I was late for it. I was at Home Depot, and it took me an hour to get from Home Depot to here, right? So all of a sudden, you're just not in the realm of a probabilistic kind of model that you've got here. And do we understand when those events occur and why they occur, and how we deal with these things? And I don't believe there was, it's not like anybody landed an airplane on Issaquah Hobart Road or something. I mean, there wasn't, there was no approximate cause for it to be that crazy.
Right. So traffic is definitely a hard thing to predict. It's a human behavior, right? A person decides to go one way or another each day, depending on the intersection they see downstream is congested, "Oh, I'm going to turn here instead today," that they wouldn't have done yesterday. So, like you said, traffic is a behavioral thing that we are trying to define with mathematics, right? And the math that goes into these calculations does attempt to take into account those variabilities in traffic, okay? The instance that you described could very well be, at any one intersection, we're showing that the volume that's approaching that intersection and wants to get through it would operate at, again, let's take the third intersection down, SR-900 and 12th, some Mamish, it's level of service F. We're predicting on an average day, you're going to have about 93 seconds of delay there. That means you're going to sit through more than one cycle to get through. But on any other given day, there could be a downstream problem that has caused a queue to back up to that intersection, and now there's an outside influence that is affecting that intersection. And so those are things that unfortunately, we can't take into account, but secondly, the city would certainly not want to design or pay for those outlier occurrences.
No, but if we understood what was happening, perhaps sometimes it's timing, right?
Right.
We would love to sequence our lights with Highway 900, but we don't get to, right?
Or a fire truck goes through. You know, you have the things on the signals that allow a fire truck to go through and re-time, yeah, Opticom, that retime the signals in order to allow the fires. That has a significant effect on any one, you know, any one hour of traffic, because for the signal system to get back in sync and for the platooning to reoccur on the corridor could cause like that effect that you saw that one. And it's something you never saw, you never saw that ambulance or that fire truck go through the intersection.
So my question is, are we, as a city, in any way noting when these severely off nominal traffic events occur and attempting to do a root cause diagnosis of why they're occurring?
All right, so that's, I guess, a question for the city.
On occasion, yes. I can give you examples. I know one interim city administrator that calls every once in a while and says, "What the heck is going on?" to get that kind of information and then figure out how recently the cause may have occurred and entering that into sort of the repository so that we can have conversations about, is there a way to minimize impact from events like that? I don't know that we have a systematic way that we're collecting that information, but we're having those conversations.
Okay. Because I would like, and I realize, Tommy, I saw you looking at your watch, I know you have a time limit.
I'm more worried about getting the next agenda item.
But I mean, some of those could have, for instance, if we decided that part of our problem is not being able to time our lights off of Highway 900, right? That might be an example of something that would inform our legislative agenda, right? Or some other mechanism beyond, you know, this concurrency model, that we try to resolve that such that we try to adjust these outliers so that people get more, at least a more predictable sense of what traffic is going to look like. All right. Councilmember Ray?
I just want to, I love this chart, it's got all sorts of fun numbers in it. Can you tell me what each of the columns means?
We bet.
And what is delay? What is total volume entering? And what is W over C? And then what's the little marginal letter?
Sure. I'll start with control, which is probably pretty obvious, but there's signalized, on this page, you see mostly signalized, but on other pages, you might see AWSC, which is all-way stop control and whatnot. So that tells you, how is that intersection being operated? The next column over, the lane group, is probably more of a technical thing, but it tells, what that tells you is, for a signalized intersection, all, every single lane at that intersection is calculated in that delay calculation. At all-way stop and two-way stop-controlled intersections, all the lanes are not included. It's only the one that's being stopped that's included in the calculation, okay? The next column over is level of service, we've talked about that, A through F. Delay is the number, that is the amount of delay on average that's experienced at, and then going back over to the lane group, either all the lanes or a subset of the lanes.
Is that average over the entire length of the day? Is it over...
No, it's, again, a peak hour, the worst peak hour. Yep, over one hour. So theoretically, that's the worst, that it would be on a typical weekday. Now, I know Saturdays and noon times sometimes are a little bit weird and different, but that's a PM peak hour average delay, okay? The total entering volume is the amount of traffic that's entering the intersection during that one peak hour, okay? And then the V over C is called volume, it stands for volume to capacity. It's that volume, which is, for example, the first line, 5,129 cars want to get into the intersection, and the capacity is the amount of capacity, the amount of cars that that intersection can process in an hour. And when you see that it's over one, it's telling you that there are more cars that want to go through that intersection than the intersection can handle. Does that help?
Deputy Council President Batiste.
Thank you. So my question in regard to level of service, this might be for Emily, and it follows up a little bit on Council President Mart's comment. We're talking about ENF and having failing intersections, but within D, which is acceptable, but we've got Ds that have higher rates of delay versus lower rates of delay. And so when is our opportunity to talk about those level of service within D and some of those more problematic intersections or areas of town where D is inching up toward E? And do we have an opportunity to talk about those?
Sure. And help me if I don't answer your questions straight on. You have that opportunity in a few different ways. You can have it as follow-up, as we schedule a follow-up to this meeting, you have it during CIP conversations as well. You'd have it if we were to bring forward a discussion on concurrency policy. If I take your question further and contemplate, what would it mean to establish a different cutoff point? I think that is something that in 2014, 2015 was part of the conversation, and we looked at what that would mean financially. I think it's also important to recognize that it doesn't dictate where improvements are happening. So there are projects on this list that are shown as D and get somewhat better after improvement. There are some that continue to get worse because volumes go up on neighboring streets, for example. So you can have that conversation, but it certainly, if you draw the line at a different place, it will significantly drive costs.
Thank you. And my thought was not necessarily around drawing the line in a different place, although when would that conversation happen if that happened, but more to look at some of those that are inching up toward E and what potentially could be done in those areas. Thank you. That answered that.
Councilmember Ramos.
Yeah, and just looking at some of the delay factors, and I know you've done this very scientifically and technically, and you follow it through, and some things just are a little more difficult to swallow. So I'm looking at, for now, Second Avenue and Front Street, number 16, okay, which shows an 18-second delay. Now, I know I travel that route a lot in PM afternoon, and it takes me half an hour to get from here to, if I go up Second to Front, 20 minutes to a half hour, I can time that. I know I allow that much time, and it's consistent, 20 minutes to a half an hour to get up to Front coming from Second, right here. So I'm trying to figure out how that ever gets to an 18-second delay. And I know the other, Front isn't moving really fast either, a little faster than that maybe, but, you know, and so I can predict that accurate today, and it shows 18 seconds, I'm trying to fit that into my reality a little bit, as I'm sure other folks are too, because that's what that is today. So I'm just trying to figure it, you know...
Yeah, and I'm not going to honestly be able to, you know, deny that that's your experience or not. What I can, all I can do is explain how the calculation is done, and, you know, whether you accept that or not is, you know, neither here nor there. But the 18 seconds is, again, an average, so the movements that you're making might be a movement that is experiencing 50 seconds of delay, but when that's averaged to the other movements that are experiencing two seconds of delay, it comes out to that 18. So remember always, like, left turns and right turns are typically much higher delay than what's shown in this table, because they're the ones that get the least amount of green time at the intersection. It's the through movements that are the heavy movements, and they usually get the most green time. And since it's a weighted average, the highest volume getting the lowest delay makes that number go down. The turn movements with the lower volumes and least amount of green time in a weighted calculation are going to not reflect the overall level of service as much. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I know what you're saying, I just, you know, is what I and many other folks experience, you know? Some of these delays, so I guess I want to, they're getting so predictable, I can now predict how long it's going to be if you travel that route long enough. And you can get pretty accurate, I guess, just anecdotally, in knowing how long to allow for that trip. And I'm getting very good at getting to the south end now on time because I know how much time to allow.
Right.
And it's not 18 seconds.
Any other questions? Councilmember Hutt.
What is the letters on the far end of the graph?
Oh, thank you for asking. So these are the levels of service from the 2013 update. So I just provided them here for the six intersections that were failing before so that you would be able to compare what, how it changed from before.
And then my other question is, are there situations where an intersection is performing poorly and it becomes so predictable that people are basically deciding to go a different way? And then it looks like it's improving, but really, it's just that people have realized that it's not functioning well? So in that event, so is that kind of behavioral thing built into your model?
That is definitely built into the model. When an intersection is experiencing significant amounts of delay, that's part of the calculation, and the model is, allows for rerouting. So cars will choose a different path if a particular intersection or series of intersections causes more delay than if they went a different way.
All right. Any other questions? All right. What do you have left?
Thank you, guys. That's it. I mean, it's the series of four tables, but, you know, we've been through it, I think.
All right. And Councilmember Moon, you're going to get back to us. Oh, Sheldon, yes?
Yes, one more slide. Sorry, I'll make this quick. This last slide is to talk a little bit about the next steps, where we're headed with this data that Torsten's provided us. Staff as well as the consultant, we're working to update the project that goes on to the concurrency impact fee calculations, as well as their costs. Earlier this evening, there was some discussion about yea or nay on some projects or some guidance and so forth. While we're going ahead and proceeding with the knowledge base that we have now, certainly the input will inform us, and it's easy to remove a project or add a project in, as we've got a substantive amount of data already for cost estimating. It is expected that once the project costs and project list has been updated, DSD is working with a consultant to update the impact fees, which will come back to council at the latter part of this year, probably towards the end of the year, for council review and adoption of the new impact fees for traffic, as well as non-motorized, those are also being updated. It's just not part of Torsten's work. And then in second quarter next year, with the adoption of the CIP and TIP, the projects will be all incorporated in there with the new values and the like, so.
Any questions for Sheldon on the "You Are Here" slide? Okay, thank you very much. And I just wanted to mention, Councilmember Moon, you were going to get back to us on, a council member, I apologize, interim city administrator, Moon, the night is young and I'm already flaking out, on sort of the feedback and the timing on when you would want to hear back from us.
I certainly will.
All right, thank you. Oh, and, but we're not actually done with this topic entirely. We're done with the presentation on staff, but I will offer the public, if anyone in the public wishes to speak to this issue tonight, as we think about this, I will offer them three minutes. You sent us such a short email, I assumed your comments would be short as well.
So if you don't have a model that reflects... So if you don't have a model that reflects reality, it's very hard to think that you are going to get the proper projects to get the community to a place in transportation where they are at least feeling improvement. And I feel that the model assumptions potentially are what is creating this sort of mind-boggling disparity between reality and what is on the page. One of the things is the averaged intersection. When you get one leg of an intersection that has too much delay, the system breaks down. And this model doesn't really reflect that type of a thing that happens all day long, every day in this town. And so how do you solve that problem? Now, you did a new concurrency attempt last time, and this time it's like, we aren't going to discuss the policies and whether concurrency is working this time. I think you have to, because I think seeing this model run and the disparity makes the need for a conversation of, is our way we're doing concurrency going to work in the future? Because did it work in this last period of time? So I would encourage you to have that, require that conversation. There was also a pool of trips from that last concurrency. I didn't see the pool of trips and how many trips have, in theory, been put into the pool, which is sort of the core concurrency method at this point in time. So it's a little harder to gauge what is actually happening, because that is what we're supposed to be doing. So perhaps you could look at, instead of trying to figure out how to maximize the amount of money that we're making from a model run, we need a model run to get us the projects that we need to actually make it easier to get through town. And if we insist on just trying to make money, I don't think that we are looking for success, because this is the moneymaker, but we never have the conversation about what's important and what is success in our town for our community. Then I'm going to say some specific things. I didn't see ST3 and its placement in this model, yet we're going to 2040. And we all know that ST3 is going to be a Mongo, massive, wacko bringer-in of traffic, potentially. So I would like to see that listed down and placed into a model. And I also, the Holly Street Bridge, just adding auto traffic in the middle of that quiet neighborhood via sort of a concurrency discussion, to me is a radically bad-faith thing for a city council to even consider before it went out to that community and said, "We are pondering this, what do you think of doing this in your neighborhood?" You just don't slide it in here. That is the cart before the horse, as far as I'm concerned. And then I would like to know if all of the assumptions in this model run are the exact same assumptions in the model run from the prior time we did it. Because the numbers could look so different because the assumptions were changed, you just don't know. Okay, was that under three minutes?
Close enough, very close, thank you. Well, we don't actually clap in council meetings, but thank you for your enthusiasm. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this topic this evening? Anyone else wishes to speak on traffic concurrency, going twice? Last chance? No? Okay, so with that, we will now move on to ID 0297, Senior Center Update, presented by our Parks and Recreation Director, Jeff Wottling. Jeff, welcome to the mic.
All right, thank you, Council, good evening. Great to be here. Boy, over the past year and a half, the Senior Center has been transitioning certainly into its new future. And as, I think we've done that, we've had a chance to converse with you a number of times, certainly with the community a number of times. I hope what you find in tonight's presentation, though it might feel a little bit repetitive, it really represents progress, and it represents another step in this policymaking decision as to how we want to operate. In that last year and a half, I think it's certainly safe to say, and the great work of Courtney and Brian and Senior Center staff, many Senior Center staff, that as that operation has stabilized, discussion of long-term operation has been allowed to happen. It's been an important community conversation, it's been an important policy conversation. We've had that conversation in a variety of forms. The task force meetings we had last year, our council and committee discussions, the conversations we've had at the Senior Center with seniors, either at coffee talk or just in lunchtime conversations. Those conversations have often been around conceptual operating models. For so long, we talked about conceptual operating models. Through the recent work we've done these past months, with the assistance of our consultant, the conversations we've had with possible partners, both regionally and here locally in the city, the letter of interest process that we went through, we're no longer at a conceptual conversation level. We're not talking conceptual operating models anymore. We're really here tonight to begin talking about one possible partner who submitted a letter of interest, and comparing that with what long-term city operation would look like. And so that really, I think, represents a shift as we move forward. I would just highlight, as we move into other presentation goals too, throughout this year and a half, along with really striving for seamless center operation, we've also really sought and desired and appreciated the assistance of council and administration. Certainly, our goal as SAF is to have a very transparent conversation around long-term operation. And so I look forward to just this further conversation and where we want to go as a community in operation. Along with this first goal that I just highlighted, and will continue to, in terms of where we're at in this decision-making process, the intent tonight is to highlight the conversations we've had with Eastside Friends of Seniors regarding their possible operating model. I think what you'll see is they're still also in an exploratory place, as they're looking at, still considering doing this. We'll also discuss the possible long-term city operating model in a little more detail, and how that compares to this operation we've been in currently as interim operation. I'm gonna note, and I'll note as we go through this, for a number of reasons, unfortunately, we're not at a same level of clarity as we start looking at those examples tonight, but at least it's a first step. And then lastly, really get to the fundamental policy question and begin to look at and discuss options for how we might want to move forward. And how do we collectively want to strive to meet the goals of this community, to meet the goals that were really identified as the guiding principles by the advisory group in their work last year. So with that, Eastside Friends of Seniors submitted their letter of interest. Since our July 24th work session meeting, I've had the chance to meet with them three times. Have met with Linda Woodall, their executive director, as well as some of their board members, who a couple of them are here tonight. We certainly got to know them and their interest. Many of you might be already familiar with their work. They're currently a nonprofit agency. They currently partner with us. We see them as great partners already at the Senior Center. They're a volunteer-based organization, providing services both in Issaquah and Sammamish. Are their two primary communities. Their program model, their service menu really focuses primarily on transportation-based work, as well as some in-home support and services that they provide as they get to know their clients better. They've certainly noted, and they're very honest, that they do not have any experience currently or formerly in operations of a senior center, or operating a senior center facility. So in that, I think what we've been able to pull out from these three conversations is, they too are exploring this option. They are still formulating their own operating model and budget. I don't have that to provide to you tonight. What we've talked about in these conversations and begun to lay out as a city, and getting an understanding of what forms of support they would be looking for from the city, it's pretty clear. That would take two forms of support, one in in-kind support. This would be our services that would be assisting them. This could be everything from facility maintenance to fleet maintenance. The topic of the bus came up as one example there. IT support would be another type of in-kind service. Along with that menu, prospective menu of services, it's pretty clear as well that they would be seeking financial support in the form of annual operations. Another item of conversation that's come up and has become clear, as they're looking at their own agency, what they really want to be careful of is an understanding to go into city center or senior center operations, they're gonna be needing to expand their own operational capacity within their agency to be able to absorb that level of service. And how that service compares to their existing program footprint. They wouldn't want their existing program footprint to necessarily just become lost. As we start looking at timeline, they would be looking at a first or second quarter of 2020, or 2020, in terms of that potential operational handoff from the city to Eastside Friends of Seniors. In that timeline, and in their own exploratory work, they've also made note to us that they would be requesting, as a part of that timeline, some 2019 city funding for some of their own capacity-building work and preparations for that transition. So as we get through the presentation, I'm sure there'll be ample questions as we go, or as I wrap up, feel free to ask. Looking now at city operation, this has been built through a lot of work that Courtney and Brian and I have done in terms of looking at what a city operating model might look like. In a broad overview, what we're looking at on the revenue side is really the, an operating model that allows us to be a little bit more aggressive in terms of revenues. I've identified two broad categories of revenues, fees and charges. This is your typical center-based, program-based, rental-based revenue that we'd be collecting as part of that center operation, anticipating about $64,000 there. We would also anticipate the ability and the capacity to go after grants and other contributions. The city is eligible for a number of grants. One of those including the King County Vets and Seniors levy. We anticipate about an $80,000 number there annually for an estimated total of $144,000 in revenue. That certainly represents a significant increase with that ability to have that added long-term staffing capacity. On the expenditure side, we would see an annual expenditure. This would include staff and program costs, and other direct expenses of $462,000. That would translate to a net operating cost. I think as Councilmember Ray asked at the last meeting, what's out-of-pocket? An out-of-pocket cost of $318,000 annually. Interestingly enough, how this compares to what is budgeted in 2018 in terms of our net operating cost, we're at $320,000. And some spare dollars, $760. How does that happen, you ask? I think one way that happens, I think one way that happens is, A, we are not, we do not necessarily have the capacity to be generating our own revenue. So there comes a point where, looking at the ability to staff up in a more sustainable, long-term way, that staffing creates the capacity to generate more revenue. So when you look at a pro forma, if you will, a cost recovery target, our current budget is at about a 14% cost recovery. Cost recovery meaning revenues versus expenses. The projected budget would be about a 31%, 32% pro forma of cost recovery, which is pretty comparable, quite comparable to peer cities that operate senior centers. I would note as well, this is not a static number by any means. If we were to choose to do long-term city operation, we'd anticipate the need, from a year-over-year standpoint, to see proportionate increases in expenses, and finding ways that we're also meeting or able to create those proportional increases on the revenue side as well.
All right, Jeff?
Yeah.
Say again, this is, this would be the 2019, assuming a sort of ramp-up of Friends of Senior?
This would be what city, what, if we were to choose to operate the facility directly as the city. So this is a comparison in 2019, or in whatever, yes. But if we wanted to, if the decision, the policy decision was to convert to city operation and do it in a long-term fashion, yes, this would be the city operating budget requested. Continuing on within this model of city, direct city operation, what that budget that I just went over, what that translates to in terms of services, what that translates into in terms of staffing. Built into that budget would be a team of three full-time employees, a supervisor, a coordinator, and an aide. So again, that ability to create some programmatic capacity. That would also certainly be, much like our other facilities, the pool, the community center, a body of part-time staff, and as well of a rather robust body and team of volunteers as well. Looking at programs and services, what's built into that and what would be anticipated would be continuing at a five-day-a-week lunch service delivery. We would look at creating some increased capacity within social service offerings, resource referral, other opportunities. It would create capacity for expanding trips and tours.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, we're just done?
Oh, obviously, we're waiting for the break. I'll ask you right now, this staffing, how does it compare to what you're doing today?
So today, in the interim model, we have one full-time staff person and part-time staff and volunteers.
So we have, so this is, so long-term, one to three FDEs. The equivalent, you don't have a more complete number as far as today, just one FTE and some part-time? What those equivalent FDEs are?
I don't have equivalent in terms of what they are as FDEs. I wouldn't, I don't in here either. That would be three full-time staffers, and now we have one full-time staff person.
Other questions? All right.
I gotta poke at that just a bit. That doesn't foot. So if I've got one FTE today, and it's costing $320,000 net to run the senior center, and you're gonna triple the number of FTE in 19 to go to this model, and we're running about the same budget, I can't reconcile those numbers. Because you know, I know, the biggest cost driver on this thing is salaries.
Yeah, so again, I think that's the net operating budget of this year's budget. That's what's budgeted. I don't know, given that we're at one FTE, we are not, that's likely not gonna be our actual expenses for a budget.
So I'm gonna say, I mean, this is an update of where we're at.
Right, right.
And I think this is identification of a topic, because I too want to understand that one better. And so if, when you come back, if next time we chat, understanding the current full-time and part-time staffing, and the future full-time and part-time, and how that would go into, yeah, it does seem, I do have the same question, like, how do we get more people for the same amount of money? And can we do that everywhere? Can we do it with the police and?
So I want to be clear, also what I'm comparing is not the expense budget. I'm comparing the net operating cost. And so what else we're able to do with those additional staff is? And so what else we're able to do with those additional staff is attain, attain a lot more revenue. So, but yes, absolutely. This is not a budget request.
Let me ask it another way. In 2018, are you generating any, what's your revenue you're generating in 2018?
2018, we're roughly, we're generating about 20 or 30,000. So it's significantly less.
Councilmember Hunt.
You had said earlier that as, as you increase the staffing capacity, that that would increase the revenue, the abilities to get more revenue. So, but then there's also in that last slide, there's an expectation that it would be fairly constant, the 32% cost recovery. So does that mean that, that then this revenue represents what we would expect to be with anticipated year-over-year performance will be proportionate, but it'll be similar? So it doesn't, it isn't expected to change over time? This would be pretty similar over time with those three FTEs? That's the amount you would expect in revenue?
We would anticipate that, I think a key pro forma, there's a number of pro formas, right? Participation, a number of things, but cost recovery being in that 30 to 35% cost recovery year-over-year. So as expenses increased, we would also anticipate the need to be gathering and collecting more revenue.
But I want to address something. I, I saw some hands up in the, in the audience. This is not unfortunately a session where we do Q and A with staff, but I will be taking comment at the end. And if you have things that, that you have as questions, then I encourage you to give public comment and say, you know, here's some supplemental information that I hope to understand better and that will inform us. So if you continue to proceed.
You bet. All right. So how might we consider moving forward? And certainly not asking for direction or a decision tonight, that certainly was not, not the intent. But as we now have before us really the two most immediate options for long-term operation, Eastside Friends of Seniors and a, and a third-party management model or direct city operation, here are a, a number of options that we can consider. Would, would certainly appreciate feedback as, as I finish this. One is pursuing city as the long-term operator. Within that option, that is probably from a timeline standpoint, the most ready and available. It really folds right into the 2019 budget deliberations with the long-term operating model, fine-tuning and actually adopting budget and staffing levels. We would then in turn look at transitioning right in the first quarter of 2019. Another option to consider would be to move forward with and assume Eastside Friends of Seniors as the long-term operator of the senior center. That has a little longer runway. As I, as I mentioned earlier, what it would mean is the city continuing as interim operator in 2019, given that we wouldn't want to, to close the doors and Eastside Friends of Seniors wouldn't be ready. Also in 2019, as I mentioned earlier, Eastside Friends of Seniors, excuse me, would desire some capacity funding from the city to help in their preparation work. In 2019, we would then be negotiating that management agreement and the terms and all the details that go with that. If we were to accomplish that management agreement, then the earliest operational handoff for Eastside Friends of Seniors again would be Q1, Q2 of 2020. Another option we could certainly consider, moving into the later part of this year and into early next year would be continue to explore Eastside Friends of Seniors as a potential operator. This too would mean as we're looking at budget process right around the corner, we would be building a budget framework around interim operation. Should we pursue that option? Both parties in the first quarter of, of next year, latter part of this year would complete this exploratory work within this model. I would imagine that we would want to, or at least as staff, we would want to establish a firm decision date sometime in the first or second quarter of 2019. Once we reach that decision date, we would proceed accordingly. If it was city operation, that would then likely happen in 2020. If at that decision point it was Eastside Friends of Seniors, it could then in turn push that to late 2020 or January 2021 when that handoff would, would occur. So it's a broad overview. I know there's many, I'm sure many questions and, and further details.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. Could you go back a few slides, please?
You bet.
So listening to you present this information, well clearly the city's operating the senior center in 2019. All those options say that. And it seems like your third category, continue to explore, is really kind of a precursor to see if the second category is even viable. That's, that's the way I heard that? And, and, and so the near-term, it seems like the only decision that's going to be in front of us as a council in 2019 is what to grant you through the budget for 2019. And that one way or another, you are planning to still explore the other option. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is that, is that correct?
Yes. I think what we are hoping for in this process, decision-making process is as we get direction as to what long-term operation is, it's going to take a while to ramp up and get to that. So yes, 2019 will be likely, will, will be city operation in one form or another. Interim operation though, again, is not, does not have within it the capacity to sustain over a long period of time. And we are, I think, approaching a point where the seniors, the senior center, the patrons are desiring increased services.
So follow on. So explain to me then the difference between what, what would be different in an interim versus if you said, okay, we're at long-term versus an interim operation in 2019? What's the difference?
Good question. Interim operation is what we're doing right now. So interim operation is taking one full-time staff person, an FTE position that is budgeted in another part of the department and it's been operating the senior center with part-time staff and volunteers. It's been doing a great, great job, but it's really keeping the operation going. It's not really positioning it to be as responsive as we might want to be in terms of moving the senior center forward. Long-term operation, long-term operation is staffing it and positioning in a way to have it function on its own in a more healthy way.
Okay, and go back one more slide. Long-term operation from the city, up one more, then, no, you went to, right there. Then allow, then you can begin working on the increased social service offerings, the expanded trips and hours, the expanded health and wellness programs, the expanded partnerships with senior-focused agencies. That's what would not happen in an interim state 2019.
Correct, correct.
Councilmember Ramos.
So back to the other slide option. I guess I'm trying to figure out the difference between the second and third bullet. So to me, you know, if, I don't see the second one as possible if the third one still needs to happen because the third one says, we're not sure if we can do it and make it work. And that's a statement now. And the second bullet says, we're sure we're going to make it work, we just have to do the work to get it there. So I'm kind of having, you know, where we are with, you know, because it's like, you see what I'm saying? It's a question on three of whether that partnership's going to work, right? And so the second bullet says, we're pretty ready to move ahead with that partnership. And that's why I'm having trouble getting behind because I'm, you know, I'm fine with the partnership, it's just if, if they don't know that yet, then how can we pursue the second one?
Yeah, I'm merely putting up options. I'm not recommending option. I would not recommend option.
But I'm just saying, how are both of those possible at the same time? That's what I'm trying to get.
They're not. I mean, it seems to me, it seems to me pretty clear. In 2018, we have three options in front of us. We can definitely towards, go towards having the city be the long-term operator. We can definitely go towards having Eastside Friends of Seniors be the long-term operator. Or we can say we want to take some more time. We're not ready to make that decision and we want to give it a little bit more time and get in and make that decision in Q2 of 2019 with additional information. So it's really up to the seven of us, right? The seven of us say, you know what, Eastside Friends of Seniors, they're ready to go. That's a decision we can make or we can as seven make a decision that says, you know what, that shows promise, but we're not quite ready to make that decision yet, right? And of course, we're not making that decision tonight. We're not making any decisions tonight. We're just getting a status on, on what's coming. Deputy Council President Batiste.
Thank you for the presentation, Jeff. On the third option, the management agreement, what was the timing on that? So there's no bullet point for it, but I believe you said that would kind of push into 2020 or even 2021?
Yeah, I think with, if, if the collective is, we need more time to decide, then yeah, you're right. I could have added a bullet that the management agreement, if we establish a firm date and say April 1st, no fooling, and we decide, yeah, Eastside Friends of Seniors, we're going to go that way, then we're, you know, four, four months delayed in that management agreement process, which then pushes back probably that transitional handoff a little bit.
And what, what would, would there be certain things that you've talked with the group about that if they were, in the third option, if there were more time available, are there certain things that could be done to get, to get prepped for, you know, going into a full agreement? Or is it that in the second, in the second option, it talks about capacity funding request and that kind of thing? I'm just wondering if it's, it's the ability to, where they would need staff and need to get started in that way? Or if, within the third option, if there were certain avenues that they could go down that would get them prepped for, you know, going into that management agreement?
That's a good question. I can't answer it because I think more of it is where are they, where are they at? There's some, there's some clear work that they need to do as an agency as they're exploring this to put together and that we need to see in that third option in terms of what's an operating, what's a, what's their operating model look like, what's a budget look like, what's their staffing need look like? So a lot of that work is, we work in their, in their court.
Okay, thank you.
Council, I'm sorry, ma'am. We do not, at full council meetings, we do not take question and answer during deliberation, but we do take public comment and we will very, very shortly. Councilmember Ray, did you have a question or comment?
I did, but Councilmember Hunt was first.
Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. So there is information about the city-owned model for services provided and for staffing and for the budget, but there isn't at this time for the Eastside Friends of Seniors. And so to compare these, it's hard because there's a lot of information for one option and very little information for the other option at this point. So can you help me out with any sort of information about the expected on, on any of those three points at this point?
I can't. I've had three meetings with them. I, I'm.
Yeah, in terms, Administrator Moon.
Thank you. I am going to just try to capture the three, actually number two and number three in a little different way, see if this resonates. So number two is, we're really interested in Eastside Friends of Seniors and we would like to continue to explore, explore them as an operator. And thus we are going to be receptive to them potentially making a capacity funding request. So I think Councilmember Winterstein asked, you know, is, is the interim operation the only kind of decision-making that's going to be happening or budgetary impact? And the answer to that is maybe. If, if you give us some input tonight and say, you know, I'm still interested in number two here, then we should expect that if Eastside Friends of Seniors is still interested in working with us and vetting this option, that they will come back with that funding capacity request in 2019. What we're hearing from them is that is probably necessary for them to continue to think about the ramp-up to being able to deliver services on the nearer timeline, that one of 2020 operation. However, option three is, yeah, we might still want to explore a relationship with Eastside Friends of Seniors, but we may not be ready right now or in 2019 to think about investing in their capacity building. And therefore we're going to keep talking, but at some point in 2019, we're going to stop talking and decide if this is a real option or not. And then if it, if it looks like we have better information at that point in time, then we would expect them to come back with a subsequent capacity building request unless they've decided how to build that capacity without our funding. And that just pushes the timeline out on that decision-making. So that's kind of the difference between the two options.
Thank you for that clarification.
I know, I no longer have a question. I deferred to Councilmember Hunt because she said the question much more eloquently than me.
All right. Other, other questions or comments for staff before we go to public comment? Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. Nikki did kind of ask this, so what we don't have is a, and it's, because it's not possible, but what we don't have is a kind of A, B comparison between total costs and programs. What can the city do at what cost? What kind of programs? How many people can they serve? Level of service, kind of a lot more detail than you're able to provide. But obviously that would be the best possible way for us to make a decision because I assume that one of the reasons we're even considering of, for, for contracting for the service is that an external party can do more, better, cheaper than we can do as a city. Because if, if the best option for the best services, for the best price, but for the best services is for us to bring it internally, then, then we would do that. But we look at an outside option because the services, the level of, the quality of services, the whatever, and, and the cost that they could do it is, is better for the seniors. Cost is better for us, the overall services packages is better for the seniors. But we're not, we're not able to make that assessment at all right now. And, and I don't know how we're going to get there, but it'll be very interesting for me to hear perhaps during comments tonight or in afterwards about clients of the senior center, about what they're, what you're experiencing today, about the programs or the lack of programs or what your, your hopes are, or maybe some aspirations that you've heard of or talked about and would like to see in this program because that will be important to help just judge. Because if we go into just a interim operation in 2019, which is kind of, I'm going to put some words in your mouth, Jeff, it's kind of more the same of what we've been doing in 2018, then I want to get a sense of how that's perceived. Because I think the long-term operation for the city and any, if we were to hand it to an external partner, I think you're also telling us that you think those programs would expand and improve upon what we have today.
That would be our expectation.
So, okay, so, thank you.
Councilmember Ramos.
Nicely stated. I appreciate that. And that's, that's basically the question I had too. And then just the technical part, for our standpoint, no matter what we do here in 19 budget-wise, we're going to plan on, on operating the senior center from our budget capacity, whatever that is. So that, that's a decision that we are, we are making. The question I have then is, at what point in time do we need to get to this, this point where we need to decide, okay, we're going to, we want to continue that because we want to make it the best possible and interim is not the best possible. Stable is the best possible. Stable is the best possible. We're going to get to that point or we're going to work with the partner to, to get there. So when do, when does that have to, that information come out? And we have to make that decision. But for now, budget-wise for 19, I'd say, you know, money-wise, it's going to be basically where it is, regardless of the policy of what we're doing, pretty much. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, and the questions is, is also wisely stated. It's, it's the best service we can provide with, with, to, to folks. And what is, what do, what do they want? You know, that's, I want to hear some public comment too. What, what, what are they desiring from what they know in all these studies? You've worked with them for over many meetings and across many things. And what's the feeling from, from the users?
Other council comment? Counselmember Gooden.
Thank you. So I've mentioned this before and so I'll ask it again. My comment is that I would be interested in a model and operator that would be willing to or interested in and able to do self-sustaining revenue generation. So I've talked about the Winachi model before and their ability to fundraise and have a thrift store. I think they have a fairly significant budget. We keep getting hung up on how much it's going to cost the city every year. I'm not sure that that center takes any city money every year. Or if they do, it's not much and they have a significant budget. So is there any interest on the part of the city to try to find an operator that would be interested in and have the ability to do that?
Yes. And as we went through our community conversations and our conversations with agencies and providers and put out a really broad, cast a really broad net for a letter of interest. We didn't, yeah.
Counselmember Winterstein.
Just for clarification, Stacy's comment prompted me to think of it this way. When I, when I asked about like a comparison, which we don't have, costs to options A and B, part of my assumption would, would be, because you showed that we could, through grant writing and attract some funds. And we know that the previous operator, well, for whatever we think about that operation, we provided roughly half at about $99,000 a year. So as a rough cost comparison, we're looking at something more. But the point there is that, one way or the other, they raised the other half of the money that they needed. And, and so my assumption is that if we, and I think Stacy was even carrying this even further, I think, is, is it's not just the total cost. It's, it's really the total cost to us because the assumption would be that there would be, there would be other development capacity from an organization that took over, if they took over, right? They would have ability to raise their own funds, however they attracted that. I'm not assuming fees and stuff like that. And like you said, grants and what have you, and working with other partners. So, so it's, yeah, it's, it's a cost comparison. But I'm assuming that there's a, there's a whole other revenue stream that they would be, have some ability to create, whether it be through a retail store or other, whatever, other options.
And we will, we will continue to try and get that from them in terms of their budget and operating model.
So, so some thoughts. First and foremost for me, I want to echo that both tonight and later, the input from the clients of the senior center is going to be super important to me around this question that Bill asked about, you know, would we be able to make a decision this year? Would we have to wait till next year? That's going to be heavily informed by, by what I hear from the public. At some point, I'm going to want to see, and this is, some of this is reiterating, programs, revenue generation, what that looks like if we run things, what that looks like if Friends of Seniors runs things. An area that we haven't talked about that I would also want to see on that day when we make a final decision is also the governance model, you know? We had, that factored heavily into when the last time the senior center was private. And I, I think everybody would want to understand how that might look if the city continued to run it and how it might look under a private group. And if there's a benefit, one way or the other, to, you know, the self-decision from that organization about how, how that building looks and how the programs run that are, that are in it.
Right.
Other council questions or comments before we open it up to public input? Is there anything else that staff wants to cover before we open up to the public? Seeing none, I will ask, first of all, I want to thank everybody for waiting. I'm sorry that we had to move this to second. I know some of you were concerned about the fact that it's now dark and people are going to have to go home in the dark. And I apologize for that, but we are here now and here you are and here we are. And I will ask if anybody wants to come up to the microphone. If you do, you are welcome to share your affiliation with the city or not. And three minutes as we, three minutes each, as we did with the, the previous item. Three minutes each per person, not, not total for the topic. Oh, and I'll also, I'll also allow, we had some clapping earlier and I said, don't clap. If you would like to signal an affinity with what the previous speaker has said, that what we've been doing lately is having people raise their hands. And I will, I'll note if, if something carries quite a bit of, of support in the room. With that, sir, welcome.
I'm Jan Pelroy. I volunteer currently do the memoir writing class and also contribute money for scholarship and program development. I would like to say this is one place where government is really functioning well. The program over at the senior center is being run really well. I have to thank Jeff and Brian and Courtney and the staff. It's amazing what they've been able to do on the short budget that they've, that they've been on. And I was on the advisory board, working to where we are today. I strongly feel that the city should continue running it. The people that I talk to are extremely happy with the, with the operation and how it's going and how it's developing and how it's growing. That's about all I have to say. The city is doing a great job and you should be proud of what they've been able to do compared to what we came away from. Thank you.
And I see some hands go up in support of those comments. Thank you. Who would like to speak to us next? Sir?
Good evening. David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. About a month ago, I was the only one from, in the public that came to speak to the council when you discussed this a month ago. And I said, the public, the people there are very happy with how the city is running it. Jeff has got a lot of experience running a great senior center in Kent. And I think we're on a very positive path. I emphasized that and I will again. Volunteer program has to be much further developed in the city to support the senior center and the park department in general and other parts of the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I see some hands go up for that as well. Other, anybody else wishing to speak to us this evening?
Counsel Dave Wagner. Yeah, I'm associated with the city. I asked these folks several times last week and week before. And I'm going to just ask them to put their hands up because I asked them to come tonight. If you like the way the city is running the senior center right now, would you please raise your hands? Thank you for that. Couple of things I want to comment on. One is on the slide with Jeff knows and Courtney knows and Brian knows. Because I, I ask a lot of questions during the task force and I still will ask the questions. I'm not the enemy here, they know that. But we've got a much better senior center now. And the assumption that we, as a city-run senior center, could or could not raise money, as I've said to some of you council members, don't make that assumption because I really believe as a city-run senior center, we can raise money, we will raise money. You're looking at the poster child as Councilmember Ramos knows. When some of you were busy running a campaign to be on the city council, I was helping the county get the Veterans Seniors and Human Services levy passed. And it did pass. I fully believe in my heart of hearts that we can be effective in raising money that will help us be the senior center that we really can be. My, my contention is that this interim thing is not a good thing for us. We were interim in 2017. We're going to be, finish being interim in 2018. Now it looks to me very strongly like we will be interim in 2019. So we've got to make a decision and it shouldn't take us this long. We've got a great senior center now. It's running much better than it ever has. And I really want to see it continue under city leadership. That's my position. And I think that there will be some of these folks in this audience that will come up and say the same thing. Jan and I, where'd Jan go? There he is. Jan and I suffered through that task force and those meetings, week after week after week. And hard questions were asked. And guess what? All those task force parameters that you have in your report, we've achieved them. We've got transportation now that we're transporting seniors. We've got five-day-a-week meals, you know? All of those things that we asked for. We've done, we've done gung-ho so far. I got to tell you, we're going to be able to do it effectively in the future and raise money. No doubt in my military mind. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Bunch of hands on that one as well. Appreciate it. Other public comment?
Elizabeth Lopez, 100 Big Bear Place. I don't currently use the senior center, but I have been following this and, and listening to what you're saying. And I think it's really important that you pay attention to governance now at the beginning, whoever is handling this. But particularly if the city is handling it, you need a way for the people who use the center to have a mechanism where they can constantly give feedback. Because what they desire right now may not be what's desired a couple of years down the road. So the governance model needs to allow for a continuous loop of feedback. And as you spoke about a self-sustaining model, I'm wondering, have you checked out that assumption with other cities that are running senior centers to see if the good ones are basically self-sustaining? That may not be an accurate assumption. So I just, I think there are ways that you could check out that assumption. And if you expect the center to be significantly involved in generating revenue, ask other senior centers how they do that. So you can bring some ideas to the table and then talk about it with the people who are actually using the center. And they'll tell you what their capacities are and what their great gifts are. And I'm sure some of them are very gifted, but maybe in ways you didn't anticipate. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And there were some hands on that as well. Other public comment this evening? Sir, if you'll come forward.
Just to kind of support what she just said. My name's Harold Egerton. I live at Providence Point and there's quite a few old people that live up there. So we go down to the senior center a lot and we really enjoy it. And it really has improved. You guys are, they're, you're doing a great job running it. My wife and I, Val Hoover, came from Olympia and we used to attend the Tumwater Senior Center, which is city-run. And the way they, one of the things that they did is they had a board made out of seniors. And they didn't have the last say-so. The people that gave us the money is the ones that had the last say-so. But at least, at least it allowed the seniors to feel like they had some say-so in what was going on. And, you know, we took, it was run really well. We had a president, a vice president, a secretary, and we took notes and minutes and, and it was really, it made you feel like people cared. And I'm really hoping that this is just not a formality because I've been to a lot of meetings like this where it's already been decided what's going to happen and it only depends on the budget. But I'm really hoping not because it's running really well. You have a great staff running it. And I, I only see better things happening if the city runs it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Bunch of hands going up on that as well. Anyone else wishing to make public comment this evening? Anyone else? Sir?
Good evening, counsel. My name is Gregory Wagner. I've been a member of the senior center since 2006. I was involved in this chaos we had there back in '15, which sure you members know about. And since the city's taken over, which I was hoping for a while back, the place has been a tremendous improvement. Courtney's done a very fine job. The staff is always happy, pleasant, outgoing. It's a wonderful place to go. And I really hope the city maintains this and keeps up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Bunch of hands on that as well. Other public comment this evening? Ma'am?
Good evening, city council. I am Terry Claypool. I'm the board president for Eastside Friends of Seniors and I appreciate this opportunity. There's no group that's spending more careful consideration about this than the board and staff of Eastside Friends of Seniors, other than probably you and Jeff. We, better, cheaper, more services. We want to be sure that we really could deliver on what you would want from us and at the same time, continue the services or at least not, you know, have that be a detriment to the services that we already provide. All eyes would be on us. Clearly, the, the people who use the senior center are very happy with it. And it would be a lot easier, we would just be waltzing in to fix something that isn't, you know, providing such great services. But that's, it matters to us that the people who would use the services really care about who operates and why they operate the service center. So you're sensing that we need time. I think you're sensing, when you look at this, that we need time and you're right. Where it's an accurate sense and it would be no small step. And I have a lot of confidence in the board, have a lot of confidence in the staff and have a lot of confidence in the city of Issaquah. I'm a city resident and I'm very excited about it. Pretty new to the whole area. But your sense that we need a little time is correct. I don't know that we need more than a year. I think we could do it. We just need to partner and talk and keep the communication open and bring in lots of residents and senior center customer input to make sure that we're doing the right thing. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I see a few hands on that one also. Anyone else wishing to make public comment this evening? Any chance the person who had asked, who had wanted to ask questions earlier wanted, wants to make public comment? Nope, I see not. Okay. Well, going twice, public comment. One more. And with that, we're going to close public comment. I want to mention, take just a brief moment as council president. There was a question, somebody said, I sure hope that this hasn't been preordained. Let me assure you, this council, there are many people in the city would love it if the council made up these decisions ahead of time, but we don't. We listen to the public. This is an issue that the council, that has been near and dear to our hearts for a number of years. And we will be very careful and deliberative in our decision-making on this subject. And we look forward to hearing from more of you again and your fellow, and your fellow clients at the senior center as this process moves forward. So thank you very much. And with that, we're going to move to our final item of the evening, which is ID 0306, solid waste services, recycling markets. And there's... Kapanowski?
All right, stay with me.
Here, nothing sharpens intellect quite like being on the final item of the evening.
Excellent. All right, let's make sure. Pull it up this way. Okay. All right, I was asked to come here tonight to give a broad overview of the current situation with recycling markets and the local impact that the disruption in the recycling markets has caused. With me today to help answer some questions at the end are Jeff Brown of Epicenter Services. Jeff is the consultant that helped write our current contract, as well as many of the other contracts across the state. And also with me is Kevin Kelly, the general manager of Recology in Seattle. And the situation is kind of evolving on a week-by-week basis as things continue to move forward, so they may be able to answer some of the more detailed questions easier than I can. I also wanted to say that there's been a lot in the news lately, and while some haulers in jurisdictions have chosen to end recycling collection or have landfill-bailed recycling, we haven't done either. We haven't been asked to do either, and we don't plan to do so. Our current collection system started in 2005, when we moved from source-separated, some of you may remember those three bins, to a commingled all-in-one recycling bin. And, let's see. In part, this was due to the global markets opening up and the markets in China being able to accept commodities that had a little bit more contamination than some of the local processors. Some of the pros of this switch were to expand that kind of accepted materials list. It increased diversion, which diversion is the amount of material of the total of three streams that doesn't go to the landfill. So we'll get into diversion rate a little more detailed when the county comes out to discuss the solid waste comprehensive plan in October, hopefully. But our current interim goal with the county is a 70% diversion rate. Our residential rate right now sits at about 60%, and our commercial rate is about 31%, and our multifamily rate is about 28%. So total, we're just above 40% diversion rate for the city. Paul?
Could you define diversion rate?
Yeah, so if you take all three streams, compost, recycling, and garbage, the percentage that is not going to the landfill as garbage is the diverted amount, so that's the diversion rate. So if we're aiming for a 70% diversion rate, only 30% of those, the total material collected would go to the landfill.
Councilmember Hunt?
Is that area or weight, or how is it, how is it defined with the compost?
It's by tonnage currently. And King County is assessing, and they'll, part of the reason they'll discuss it more with the comp plan is they're trying to determine in the future that 70% is an interim rate, and they'll try and figure out if there's a better metric to use moving forward, because there are some problems when you do it all by tonnage. You know, food waste weighs a lot more than aluminum. So look forward to more discussion on that. There was also increased participation in recycling when we rolled out commingled recycling. More people decided to use the carts. They put more stuff in it. There was a decrease in litter from having the open containers, and also a decrease in the moisture from rain that ended up in the paper recycling in those open boxes. There were some cons. We became a little bit dependent on the end market, the export market, that had lower processing standards, which is kind of the, we're reaping what we were sowing then. And there was a higher contamination of materials in the commingled processing system, and we'll show you how that system works here in just a second. So really, in short, our haulers pick up our materials in our commingled bin. It's sorted at a materials recovery facility or a MRF, and there's both mechanical processing, optical sorting processing, and hand sorting of materials. And I have a little video here to show you in just a second. And then it's sold to domestic and export markets. Some of the materials, like glass, steel, and aluminum, stay here. There's local markets for those items. Glass weighs a lot. It's expensive to ship anywhere, and it's not worth a whole lot of money. Plastics, paper, and cardboard tend to go to export markets. Of all the material that we collect, about 40% of it is mixed paper still, even with newsprint kind of going away. 12% is plastic. About 40% of the commercial market is cardboard. 20% of the residential is cardboard. And then glass makes up about 15% in Issaquah.
Can I ask a question around carbon sequestration? So for me, there's, I mean, recycling, there's a bunch of different factors involved, right? But if you believe that carbon sequestration is the most important environmental issue going forward, is there a one-to-one comparison between recycling and benefit, and increase in carbon sequestration? Or is there any, you know, like, is the recycling process sometimes, like, for instance, if you had a process that allowed you to not have to use as much glass or new glass, right? But it required an energy-intensive process where you burned a ton of carbon, you know, you could argue that that would have, you know, the environmental impact of such a policy would be complex. Is it complex or is it simple?
That would be a good question for somebody with a little more carbon expertise than me. I think, I know there have been studies that show glass, for example, when you use recycled cullet in your furnace as opposed to new material, you, actually requires less electrical input into your furnace. So there are a lot of systems where not only do you not have to extract the virgin material, but there is less carbon intensity in the production of the end product because you're using recycled material. I don't know for every material. So I think, yeah, I'm not totally sure, but I don't know any feedback. More or less.
More or less, okay. Because, I mean, there's a lot of silica out there in the world, but, you know, putting on one-of-seven, like my one-of-seven hat, for me, it's about the carbon sequestration.
Got it.
Or carbon, or reduction of carbon footprint, I should say, rather than sequestration.
Right.
All right. Any other questions right now before we keep going? Nope? Okay.
And when I tried this earlier, the sound didn't play, so I may narrate. That's why I pulled it up here.
There we go.
So this is a video of the MRF and the sorting system that Recology put together with Starbucks, so you may notice a little branding. But it's overall a very good look at how the process inside looks. Right now, they start by putting it in a plastic bag, which... So here's the tipping floor of the materials recovery facility where the, each load comes in and is dumped. And as you can see, it's all mixed together. There's a feeding system that meters out how much runs into the equipment all at once, and they can monitor that and measure it to make sure that the speed is acceptable and that there's not too much coming in. It breaks up any of the large compacted pieces that come out of the truck, because that gets pretty squished in the truck sometimes. And I'm also happy to arrange tours of the facility. It's fascinating to go to the senior center. Speaking of a group that has gone, has gone on a tour there before, and they all loved it. And so it goes down this meter, and the hand sort, first line is to pull out contaminants. Loose plastic bags are probably one of the worst contaminants in there. So they pull those, if it looks like a garbage bag and they can't see inside it, it automatically goes in the garbage. They're not going to risk opening up a bag and dumping whatever's in it on the line. They pull out large chunks of plastic, so here they pull out the bag. They know it's recycling because they can see it. It's a blue bag. And this is how fast it runs. And then it goes through a series of screens where the larger material in this set of screens floats over the top, the cardboard and the paper, and then all the smaller pieces, broken glass, fines, shredded paper, smaller plastic pieces go through that onto another screen, which runs up to a screen with closer-together discs. And then it goes through another line of hand sorting, a couple different lines of hand sorting. And then the magnet pulls off the steel. There's a reverse eddy current magnet that kicks off the aluminum. And then this is an optical sorter that uses jets of air, and it can detect what type of plastic runs over the screen and shoot it off into one of two different directions. And then it gets, goes into a bunker where it's squished together and bailed. And then it goes, if it's for export, it goes into a container. Or if it's for local markets, it goes into a container that's bound for a local market. So again, those plastic bags are a really bad contaminant there. Some other things that they find in the stream that are really bad are jeans, you know? Those wrap up a disc screen in a really bad way. They find all sorts of things in there. So contamination is both things that affect the end quality of the material that they're looking to have. So if plastic ends up in the cardboard, that's a contaminant. Contamination is also food waste that ends up in the recycling stream or other things that make the finished bailed product less recyclable.
Councilmember Hunt?
So thank you for this overview and the plastic bags. You can see why those are a problem. I wondered if there are other, if there are other just common mistakes. You mentioned also jeans, but other common mistakes that are the biggest issues with the contamination that make things unrecyclable?
Yeah, I'll refer that question to Kevin.
Sure. So again, Kevin Kelly with Recology, and basically, we see any number of contaminants that come through. I would say the top five, three to five are film, film plastic that isn't, hasn't been prepared properly. So if you have a plastic grocery bag, we ask that you stuff all those together, tie it up, and then, as you saw in the video, we can handle it a little bit better, or it won't wrap around our screens. We get a lot of styrofoam that is incorrectly placed into the bin, and for that, you know, we have an option at the Recology store down in Gilman Village where you can drop it off. Food waste is a big problem because, one, it's moist, and it ruins the fiber material. And then, oh, what else? Those are the three biggest that come to mind. I can send a more comprehensive list to Mica, and he can share it with you guys, but...
Councilmember Ray?
Don't go anywhere. I think you might be coming back. So this is kind of a follow-on to that. And what kind of public outreach has been done or is done regularly to help the public understand how to make this process work more effectively?
Right. So we do a lot of work in our office with restaurants and outreach to businesses to make sure that their bins are labeled correctly. We try and work with some of the public recycling, Salmon Days, for example, to try and get proper signage. Recology is great to work with in terms of putting out information in the billing. We add little informational snippets to each of the bills. Annually, we have a service guide that goes out that has materials lists in that service guide and which bin people can put them in. We do a lot of work with the schools, because that's, you know, a great place for them to start, and they're on top of it and fantastic. So we do a Waste Zero Lunch program with the school district, and we've done that four years running now, where on Earth Week, they do Waste Zero Wednesday, and they compete across all the schools to see how little they can actually put in the garbage, and it's like a wastepaper basket for 500 kids. It's absolutely amazing. And then they carry that out through the year or two. It shows in their end-of-year diversion reports. Let's see, am I missing anything? So we do a lot about that. Some of the messaging is changing a little bit because of this, and I'll show you that at the end of this.
Other questions right now? Nope? All right.
So, like I said, this is kind of an evolving policy coming from China, and there have been a lot of changes over the last two years. So if we were to talk about all of them, we could spend a lot of time. So I've kind of pulled together this broad timeline to cover in broader strokes the changes in the policy that's created this market turmoil that we're seeing. So in 2013, the green fence was a policy that was enacted that was kind of a crackdown on rules and policies that already existed but just had been ignored or weren't really being enforced on the materials that were coming into China. And so they started that crackdown. It didn't really impact us that much here. Fast forward then to February of 2017, when they announced a policy called National Sword, and that specifically focused on halting smuggling by groups importing materials without permits or with fraudulent permits. So to try and clean up some of the corruption that was in their, in their import processes. Throughout this whole time, we've been working with Recology, and it's difficult for them to get information on policies out of China unless it's specifically announced. So things keep shifting, and then they find out later on, for example, that no import licenses have been issued for the month or things like that. Let's see. So as, as the timeline moves on, though, the focus has shifted from cracking down on illegal smuggling to assessing quality issues with the material that's coming in through this commingled system. So they've been increasing inspections, breaking more bales, checking every container, which slows down the whole import system. In July, you know, they provided notice to the WTO confirming that they've planned to ban select mixed paper and plastics by the end of the year, so for January 2018. And then in November, they announced a 0.5% contamination limit on materials that were still allowed, so outside of that mixed paper and plastic that they were banning. And most of the MRFs around here, through that sorting process, you can see 0.5% is pretty difficult, if not impossible, to attain. As things were slowing down, there were some municipalities down in Oregon, some counties started stopping their recycling programs. And then in May, China just didn't allow any imports of any scrap materials into the country. Right around the same time, there were some tariffs announced, and just recently, as a month ago, a 25% tariff on clean cardboard has been threatened. All of that material kind of had to go somewhere. The, China was the largest importer of scrap material from the United States. The United States was the biggest producer of scrap material in the, in the world. And so the overflow started hitting markets in Indonesia, Vietnam, Malaysia, and Thailand, India, other countries. So in May and June, those countries started announcing stricter standards for the material coming in, because they obviously didn't want to become kind of the dumping ground. And in July of this summer, China announced a total ban on imports of scrap proposed by 2020. And that timeline may or may not shift up. So the... Where am I here?
So I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
So assumably, there were companies in these countries that were making money off doing this. People weren't doing it because they had to or because, you know, I mean, people were making money. So it's weird to me, like, something happened, right, where it was a viable industry, and yet these governments said, "We don't care that our companies are making money and employing people. We don't want it anyhow." What was that about?
So the overall goal of all of these policies, from the government standpoint there, has been to reduce... been to reduce and clean up the pollution that's part of processing all of this material that was happening, a lot of it in smaller mills that were older. And they also have a goal of not importing any post-consumer scrap, but relying on their own markets to kind of start to fill in that gap as they've created their middle class. And they're looking to be more self-sufficient in both their manufacturing and their processing. So a few things are happening. There are a lot of mills that are idle right now over there because they're not getting the scrap material that they need to turn pulp into paperboard. They're shifting some of the, what they want to be responsible back over here to the United States, and there, China is investing in mills here in the United States to process that material and then send the pulp to China to make the paperboard.
That was going to be my, you were anticipating kind of my next question.
Right.
Which is, why not just do all this here? And I know you're going to tell me it's more expensive, and I'm going to tell you that in general, the cost in manufacture between China and the US is expected to cross in about 2027, at which point it won't be any cheaper to do stuff in China than it is in the United States. Now, it'll still be cheaper to do things in Indonesia, Vietnam, Malaysia, and perhaps Thailand. But this just points to the consumers, I mean, if where you're going at the end here is like there, there's consideration of fundamentally, you know, sort of dismantling the recycling system, it seems like the correct perhaps response is to look at the market and see what the market will bear to do all these things in an environmentally sustained way here in the United States and bring, bring jobs to the United States.
You're way out in front of me.
Okay.
And probably where the region is too. But I think, I think that's a correct line of thinking.
Okay.
Who else? So here's what it did to the markets, in short. This is the mixed paper market. This was from the Seattle Times. It went from $100 per ton down to where, you know, you almost have to pay for it to get rid of the material. And then in discussions with Recology, for them, in order to make their material marketable, they've slowed down their lines, they've added pickers to the line, they've increased overtime. And so that increases their cost to process each ton of material. Well, at the same time, the markets for those materials have kind of cratered. So that gap there starts to show up. In King County in general, the Waste Management Republic who have WUTC contract areas, which is the unincorporated King County areas around the cities, which cities, most cities have their own contracts, but, so the WUTC has approved a rate change. It was a temporary six-month rate change on the processing cost and on the market price impacts. WUTC contracts' rates are set up a little differently than ours, so this doesn't translate directly. We can't just take what they did and apply it to our rates. It wouldn't work out. All three King County haulers, Recology Waste Management Republic, have asked for rate relief from their contract cities. And then King County formed what they call the Responsible Recycling Task Force. And they're looking at a couple of different things. They're looking at messaging and how we can coordinate messaging across the county for what materials should go into the bin. And they're looking at potentially asking cities to change the list of materials that go into the bin. So in our contract, there's a few recycling commitments. I just wanted to call them out here. There's a requirement to recycling compost as part of our contract. Our list of recyclables, those materials that are accepted, are part of our contract. And so to change any of those, it would require a contract amendment. And they were based on, when Recology, at the time, Clean Scapes made their proposal to us, they said, "We can accept these materials. We have markets for these materials. Send them our way." And then in the contract, it specifically says the risk for processing and marketing recycling and compost is on the contractor. So the way our contract was designed is different than Seattle, for example, where they bear the risk of the cost of the market for those recyclables. We didn't do that in our contract because we don't have the staff to assess the market all the time and, you know, things like that. So this made it easier from a contract administration standpoint. Most cities in the county are moving very slowly and kind of contemplating their different options. I met with a group of cities today. We're slowly charting what the options are, what our contract and legal obligations are. The King County Responsible Recycling Task Force, like I said, is determining if materials should be removed from the accepted, accepted list, whether we pull those plastic bags out that are accepted here, whether we pull out different kinds of plastics that currently have very little market. And then the messaging that we have, you know, the current status is that the less contamination in recycling, the more marketable that material is, and the, the better it is for the hauler and, I think, for the recycling system as a whole. The messaging to residents right now that's going out is clean, dry, empty, because that food waste is a big problem. It ruins the fibers, and same with empty. And then Connie was talking to me a little bit about there, but the, there's an effort to reduce what we call wish cycling, which is looking at a material and going, "Well, you know, this looks like it should be recycled," and tossing it in the bin. And that's where the styrofoam goes in and, you know, different things like that. So trying to stick to the list and teach people to kind of go back to not quite sorting each material out like we used to, but making sure that the right things are ending up in the bin. In evaluating some of the options, just as a general overview, we're going to come back to council in the fall to go into more detail on whether this has a rate adjustment impact, what we think's reasonable, whether we should make materials list changes, whether there should be curbside audits and contamination monitoring of the residential and commercial streams, to try and pass that education on in as direct a way as possible about what's in the bin and what shouldn't be in the bin. Or, you know, considering the no-action alternative as well.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, so right now, if I want to, I think, I think they have a service, if I want to buy something, I can take a picture of it, and Amazon will basically tell you how to buy it, right? This technology, the, the optical recognition technologies, seems like, seems like we should be able to, if not right now, then very, very soon, take a picture of something and have it tell us if that's recyclable or not. Because we can do that all, all over the place elsewhere, like optical recognition technologies are, are just exploding.
Right.
Is that coming?
I haven't heard of that coming. I don't know if, Kevin? Have you heard of it?
Well, it's, it's here, and it's in, you saw in the video, it's in, it's in use at a, in a, to a small degree at our facility currently. So we, we fire it on different types of plastics. Part of, part of the issue with this China situation is the notion of cross-contamination, where if a brown material ends up with like a white material, cardboard with paper, that's considered contaminant, contaminated. And so now what manufacturers of MRFs have come up with is more robust optical sorting technology, where you combine near-infrared technology and color scanning, so you can determine the material type and the color type, and now you have two different ways of looking at the material to determine where it goes.
Sure, and I get that, and that's cool. And I know NIR spectroscopy really well. But.
You're talking about from the consumer side.
Somebody takes a picture of a piece of styrofoam, and it says like, "Not recyclable," right? Paper cup.
Sure.
Recyclable, right? Piece of, you know, greasy McDonald's wrap that says "Clean," right, or whatever, right? Because you build a database of visual objects, and it becomes very easy for an expert system to just tell somebody, whether that's recyclable, not recyclable, or you better clean it.
So I'm not aware of anything like that for the consumer. It brings up the point, though, that manufacturers probably need to be involved in this discussion to make sure that they are creating products that can in fact be recycled. I think even if you had technology like that, it would not necessarily be adopted 100%. You would still have mistakes, and you would still have contamination.
No, but I, I think consumers in good faith still sometimes are very confused about how to recycle.
Absolutely.
And a tool, you know, you, you could, I mean, it's fairly easy to build these databases of known objects, and you don't even have to catalog all the objects. You catalog a few thousand in each of the types, and then you put an expert system on it, and the software figures out what it's, the picture that it's looking at, what category it's, it's closest to.
Sure. Yeah, I, if something like that came along, it would make our lives a lot better, without a doubt.
So I think, yeah, go ahead.
I wondered about, so there's this contamination audit that's shown here. I wondered about sort of a lower-tech version of what Council President Morse was saying, but just sort of a, something to educate people about, this is what somebody's trashcan looks like. These are some common things that can't be recycled. And so not everybody's individual audit, but a sort of educational tool that would be like, this is what, this is what is found in the garbage that is, should be in the garbage, but was put in the recycling and.
Right. And what you're looking at on the right here is a contamination audit that was done of a multifamily property, and then they take pictures and, without any, you know, names, can give this report to the property manager, and they can circulate it. We haven't started doing that here yet. It's one of the options that can be considered. You're talking about something different, or?
No, I, well, a little bit different, but just sort of some example ones. So.
So like.
Like this, but.
We have these posters, right, and we can distribute them more widely. Like I said, this, this poster is clipped almost directly out of our annual recycling guide that goes out to every customer.
So for example, the, the plastic shopping bags, that you have to bundle them together?
Right.
So that would be just an example of showing what you're not supposed to do, and them showing what you're supposed to do in an example.
I can send you a report after this, and you can share an algorithm.
Okay. And then I think the, the end takeaway is that we're still kind of assessing where to go from here, both our legal and contract parameters. And we're really working hard to coordinate with the other cities in the county because we feel like approaching this from a city-by-city basis doesn't make as much sense as it does to kind of get the whole thing together because we're all working with the same system and the same new constraints.
Right, Councilmember Hunt?
At the beginning, towards the beginning of the presentation, you talked about the change in recycling. It sounded like we previously used more domestic facilities to do the recycling, and then we've gone more and more towards exporting because that option was available, and now it's not. So are there any efforts or thought about facilities using, facilities? I think Council President Morse touched on this before, but ramping up facilities that are in the United States to take on more of this recycling efforts? And is that something that's possible in the short term, or it's more of a 10-years-out kind of thing?
Right. That's more of a long-term solution. It is starting to happen. Some of the paper mills are being a little bit retooled. There, I don't believe there are any, right in Washington State, there's some big ones in the Midwest that still accept domestic materials. And they have issues with the amount of contamination from the commingled system, so they're putting in place some processing at those. There's, like I said, China has begun investing in processing mills here in the United States. Their intention, again, is to have the processing happen here, and the flaked plastic would be sent to China to make products, or the pulp from a paper mill would be sent to China to make cardboard to send back. So the other thing this has done that I didn't really, I had a cool picture, but the way the system was set up, it was almost back-and-forth shipping. Scrap would go to China, finished product would come back, scrap would go back. And the disruption that this has caused, those boats have a much longer trip now, all the way around through Malaysia and other countries. And so there's kind of a shortage of boats to ship things now as well. And so it slowed down both the product incoming into the United States as well as the recycling going out. And recycling is a faucet that, once you turn it on, you can't turn off. So that amount of tonnage goes into the materials recovery facility every day at the same speed, almost without fail. And so it has to go somewhere. And if there's less shipping available, some of it can get warehoused or end up stacking up, and that's where you can get some other issues, like you've seen in the news. There have been some fires at sorting facilities locally. There have been some other issues with it getting wet outside, things like that.
Councilmember Ramos?
Yeah, that was kind of my question. You started getting to that because, you know, your, your thing is, say, cities' responses are slow, contemplative, trying to figure out where to go. But this is a real issue that's happening today. So what, you know, that's, I say, what's happening today, because that's, you just said, the flow is not stopping. You know, that, that sounds good for us, but what's, what's happening in reality is that, is that going to slowly start heading to the landfill because there's nowhere else for it to go? You can only hold on, back things up so long, right? And then some things are going to give. So what's, what's that bigger picture? And you're saying already some places outside of cities, it sounds like, are making some adjustments, but there's a lot of city stuff happening at the region.
Yeah, and it's, and I think this is where the whole kind of global perspective comes in. It's a lot of material, and some of it is ending up in the landfill, some of it is ending up being sold at almost rock-bottom prices. The mills that do accept some of this material in the United States are making a killing right now because they can get as much material as they need for very low prices. I'll let, I don't know if Kevin wants to speak to it. I know it's been an issue for them, for sure. And they're continuing to operate, and they're continuing to market material. But again, that chart kind of showed what happens. It's, it's costing them money to do so, to operate at the way that they've been operating.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. Mica, thank you so much for the comprehensive report and the very holistic approach that I know you and the, our, your department takes toward this, like working and talking with other cities. So I, I do appreciate that. I really didn't know what to expect this evening, but I appreciate that very much. I also want to say to Recology, this is a tough, I, I saw the economics. You're close to $90 a ton in the hole now compared to not that long ago. But, so I don't know the outcome, the long-term outcome of the current situation, but everything that has been done, this idea of everything in one bin, the degree of the sorting, I think when households, I know my household, we made a real effort to be very smart and good with that. And I think that, that makes a big difference. I think we're raising a generation of kids in this community and sure many other communities who, that, you know, there's, they're throwing less away, and things are going into recycling. There's a lot of diversion that's going on. And part of it's largely because of what the city has done and what Recology Waste Management has done as well, and, and the investments and the improvements you made in your, your facilities, the MRFs, the material.
Recovery.
Recovery facility. I do very much appreciate that. I hope this turns out good for everybody. I don't know where it's going to go, but I want you to know, I very much appreciated the investments and the efforts that you have made so far.
And I will say that in the beginning of our contract, part of what we had, and it was curbside auditing of our residential areas, just to check and make sure, see how it was doing contamination-wise. And residentially, in Izuaqua, it's actually very clean material. Multifamily and commercial has a little bit more issue with contamination. It's harder to, it's, it's a harder customer base to kind of crack in terms of providing the education, and there's also less sort of accountability at a multifamily complex. You can't point to who it was that did it, you know? So that's where the auditing would potentially come into play to help clean that up.
Other questions or comments?
So, so I have one. It's, it seems like there's sort of three potential futures. You got one where the market attempts to correct itself and, and transfer the new economic model of recycling to the consumer in the hopes that the consumer will pay it, right? So that's one. Another is the whole system collapses, and you just barrier and scenario it everything, right? The third, there's a third that's kind of, and I, I think those are the, the only two that are actually viable with people. Like, like, no business is going to keep losing huge amounts of money on every bail of recycling, right? That's not a long-term. Nobody's going to do that long-term, right? But there, there's a third that, that I think is a, is a bad outcome that, that might happen, which is that things just sort of amble along, and costs increase, and they're, and they're attributed to the difficulties in recycling. But meanwhile, more and more recycling is going into the, into the waste stream, and more and more cycling is getting, recycling is getting buried, but costs keep going up, and people say, "Oh, those Chinese, it's because they won't take their stuff anymore." Like, it seems like you really want to make a decision on if recycling is going to work, it, you have to do it in some way that is economically viable, or you should just bury everything, right? And obviously, just. right? And obviously, just burying everything is a bad idea. But what I really worry about is dribbling and drabbling along, and costs keep going up, and people don't have any confidence that the recycling is actually getting recycled or will be recycled down the road, you know? And you know what I mean? And so having some sense of, okay, here's the model that we're going to have going forward, and here's what it's going to do for our ability to recycle. I think this is a region that's absolutely takes super seriously recycling and its effect both on the environment and carbon and all that stuff, right? But I'm just super, super worried because there isn't a clear path forward right now that it's going to muddle along in a way that's going to reduce people's confidence in recycling and in, you know, the economics of waste management going forward, frankly.
Right. And, you know, we're a little unique here, I think, with Recology. The other two major haulers in King County also own landfills, so the economics is different. They make money either way. I also think there's a fourth option that, if you're interested in looking into, so the, the E-Cycle Washington program was a great model of extended producer responsibility and hugely successful, and it put the cost of recycling the product back on the producers of the product. So computer manufacturers paid into the system, and then they helped pay for and create the system that took, made the take-back network for all of those electronics. And the amount of tons that got recycled as part of that program was fantastic, and it was hugely successful. B.C. has an extended producer responsibility for packaging. So packaging companies pay into the system, and then at the end of the life, they own the packaging that comes back to them. So there are different models out there, too, other than just putting it on the consumers or landfilling it. And I think you're right. This is absolutely a time of transition where we're going to have to head in one of those directions. And there's a lot of discussions going on, on how that heads, and a lot of it is far above my head, but it's fascinating to watch, I think, and a good opportunity.
Another, Councilmember Ramos.
Just a quick one, just as you think, you slightly mentioned the fact of reducing materials that are accepted. And, you know, just for myself, thinking of, you know, I'd rather, you know, take half the materials and recycle them well, and the other half just give up on them because they can't be done as a way of doing that. If we go back to, you know, what was the first thing? What, aluminum cans and then bottles, right? Kind of stuff, steel that's done here, whatever, those kinds of things. You know, think about that. Whatever we can do well, I'd rather do part of it well than try to do more than we can get done because it just doesn't work and go to that. So just my thought in general, has nothing to do with the world, but pass it on.
Thank you.
Any other comments? As with the other two topics, I will ask if there's any public comment this evening.
David Kapler again. This is a subject I've been biting my tongue for years, but just the other day, I walked by the city dumpster out here, and there was a cannibalized computer in the garbage side, a whole bunch of steel sides from computers or other electronic stuff. And then, of course, in the garbage side is a whole bunch of recyclable stuff. And this is chronic. The city is, you go across the street here to the so-called recycle container over there that the restaurants use, and it's full of sopping wet garbage mixed in with the recyclables. It's just crazy, and it's got to change. I think, I mean, I don't think we're following our contract because we're delivering, we're not delivering garbage. We're mixing mixed garbage and recyclables in one can. In another can, we're mixing garbage and unrecyclables or unrecyclable. Out here, the city's dumpster for recyclables doesn't have a lid, or it's broken, so all the cardboard that's in there nine months of the year is worthless and just compounds their problems. We got to get our city act together. We got to get our community together. And you've got to do a lot more with the multifamily in business. It's gross.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment this evening? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Thank you for the viewers at home.